Hi, everybody. How you doing? We have a full house today. It's great to see you all. I want to welcome you all to the Pembroke Pines City Commission Meeting of October 15th, 2025. Mr. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Good.
He's here.
Vice Mayor Hernandez. Commissioner Rodriguez. Commissioner Schwartz. Mayor Castillo. City Manager Dodge. City Attorney Goran. We have a quorum.
Thank you very, very much. I would like to first ask for a moment of silence in honor of Municipal Day of Remembrance and Community Resilience. This is the day that we recall the events in the Middle East, which are now, thankfully, hopefully, coming to a swift resolution. And let's take a moment of silence for all of those who have perished, for all those families that have suffered, for all who have lost someone. Though we are very, very far away, we feel their pain, we share in their anguish, and we join them in their sincere wish for peace. A moment of silence, please. Thank you very, very much. Today, the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Gianna Piega. She's 14 years old. She lives in Chapel Trail. And I had the honor of taking a photo with her. It's my custom when people come forward to do the Pledge of Allegiance, young people, and to sing the National Anthem for us, as she will in just a second. So they get to sit in this chair and take a photo. And I don't know who gets a bigger thrill out of it, them or me, but it's a lot of fun. And so I would ask you to please stand, and Gianna will lead us in the pledge, and then please remain standing for the National Anthem. Gianna, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Wow. Boy, is this country in good hands. Thank you so very, very much. Commissioner Good, I understand you have special news.
So the special news that I have to share with everyone, and thank you for being here tonight, is that my daughter had a child, is our first grandbaby, Patty Good, who is grandma here. Mr. Abuela. And the baby is fine. Mom and dad are fine, and we're so blessed. And we are now on our journey as grandparents. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations. Longest congratulations. That's just, that's just very special and very amazing. Okay, we have some presentations to do today. Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Mike, can you give me that paper with the yellow one? No, that one. Thank you very much. Okay, let's see. The first presentation, Mr. Dodge, can you join us for a second, please? Just join us. Who brought you a chair? It's gonna take a little while. Tonight, we have the rare and special privilege of recognizing a truly exceptional individual whose legacy is etched into the very fabric of our city's history. It is with great honor and personal pride that I and our commission stand here today to present the key to the city to our city manager, Charlie Dodge. This distinguished award is a symbol of the highest level of service and recognition for distinguished persons who have made exceptional contributions to our community. Tonight, this honor belongs to Mr. Charles F. Dodge, to whom, after whom the Charles F. Dodge City Center was named, and for a very good reason. Over the past five decades, he is celebrating his 50th year with the city of Pembroke Pines. He is the Dean of City Managers in the state of Florida, and nobody can outrun him or outjump him. Over those five decades, you have demonstrated the best characteristics of good governance, complete dedication to the residents of Pembroke Pines, and your deep commitment to the well-being of our city. Fifty years, that's half a century of unwavering service to the city. You have worked with many different administrations tackling complex issues, managing surging infrastructure demands, navigating hurricanes, managing the city's charter school challenges and growth, implementing innovative programs, and it's your vision and tireless efforts that we acknowledge today, making Pembroke Pines the great city that it is. You began serving our city on October 1st, 1975, as the city's first Director of Community Services. Under your direction, the First Senior Center in Broward County opened in Pembroke Pines. Three years later, you added Director of Code Enforcement to your position. Five years later, in 1983, you became Assistant City Manager and City Clerk. And then in 1989, 35 years ago, you became our city manager. And from the time you began to today, Pembroke Pines has more than doubled in growth, more than doubled. Your leadership has been instrumental in managing this expansion. The quality of life we enjoy, the parks we visit, the streets we drive down, the municipal services we depend upon, did not happen by accident. They are a result of the diligent, quiet, committed public service that you have provided. Charlie Dodge's leadership and integrity have ensured that our city government has always worked smoothly, serving the people who rely on it. He has shown us what it is, what is possible when we work together with purpose and courage. And so tonight, we honor not just the career, but a lifetime. The key I am about to present is a small token to represent our immense thanks. It signifies that Charlie Dodge will forever have access to our community, to our collective memory, and to our deepest respect. It is an honor reserved for true leaders. It is now with the utmost gratitude that on behalf of the entire City Commission and the residents of Pembroke Pines, I present you with the key to the city. And just one more thing. Some years from now, the history of Pembroke Pines will be written. It's a little early because we're only 65 years old. Charlie's been with us for 50 years. But that history will be impossible to write without, uh... without talking about what you have meant to the city and everything that you have done for it. And for all of that and so much more, we thank you.
Hi, Mrs. Dodge. Why am I here? Nice to see you. Looking well.
Who was first? When you started? Seventy-six.
Seventy-six. Slacker.
I think I joined a lot from seventy-seven. Did you play that game? Who the hell do you know that's keeping you here so long, huh? All right. Timmy. Tim. Tim. Next, I will present a proclamation to Ram Tyrari, recognizing October 2025 as Hindu Heritage Month in the city of Pembroke Pines. My friend, how are you? Great to see you. Long time. Fifty years, a long time. This is a proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida. Uh, declaring Hindu Heritage Month, whereas Hinduism is one of the world's oldest and most widely practiced religions with over 1 billion followers worldwide and a vibrant Hindu-American community contributing to the cultural richness of cities across the United States. And whereas the principles of Hinduism, such as nonviolence, truth, and respect for all beings promote harmony, passion, and deep reverence for life that align with the values in diverse and inclusive society. And whereas Hindu Americans have made significant contributions in the fields, including education, science, medicine, arts, business, and public service, strengthening the social and economic fabric of our communities. And whereas Hindu Heritage Month provides an opportunity to honor and celebrate the rich traditions, festivals, philosophy, and cultural practices of the Hindu community and to promote greater understanding and appreciation among all residents. Now, therefore, I Angelo Castillo, mayor of the greatest city in the world, I'm telling you, it is. And on behalf of the city of Pembroke Pines and the City Commission, to hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Hindu Heritage Month in the city of Pembroke Pines, encouraging all citizens to recognize and celebrate the contributions and culture of Hindu Americans. Congratulations.
I'm nervous when I'm standing beside the mayor, so I haven't read my speech. So if you don't mind, I'm going to read my speech. And I cannot read it without my glasses, so I have to take my glasses.
I know the feeling.
And though I'm on the backside of the city commissioners, but I want to say, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney, and City Clerk, newly appointed City Clerk. Good evening and namaste. On behalf of our Hindus, six, Jan, Buddhas, Brydhan, it is a great honor for me to accept this significant Hindu heritage in Diwali month. I thank the leadership of the commission for bestowing this distinction and others like proclamation for India's Independence Day, passing a resolution for Diwali celebration, approving a statue of Mahatma Gandhi in William B. Armstrong Dream Park, and naming the entrance way to that park as a Peace Way because Gandhi G was for nonviolence, so it was befitting that it is named as Peace Way. Tonight, we have a few members of Hindu community here, so I'm thankful to them because they have, I know it is tough during workday coming and other things, but I'm thankful to them, Mayor, that they are here. We know that commission is well-known for caring for the community by creating several advisory boards, and I am in the two advisory boards. And most important is Diversity and Heritage Board, which I am proud of, in honoring and celebrating the diverse heritage and cultural traditions and thus making Pembroke Pines a welcoming and thriving community. All along H M, H H M, Hindu Heritage Month, commission has other heritage proclamations tonight for Italian-Americans, German-Americans, my congratulations to them as well. I know that Hispanic Heritage Festival was celebrated, so was American, American Heritage Festival. Hope someday in future, we are going to celebrate Diwali festival here. And Mayor has been, he created Interfaith Breakfast, and I'm glad that I'm part of that group. He also initiated a new initiative, We Love Pembroke Pines, and we fully support that. And I'm sure my community members will be happy to join that club. A little bit about Hinduism. Hinduism is also called Sanatan Dharma. It is the oldest living religion. It is the third-largest religion in the world. Hindu Dharma has given birth Hindu Dharma has given birth to multiple other faiths like Jainism, Buddhism, Sikhism. So collectively, they are dharmic faiths, and we are proud they are all originated in India. Family and education are the cornerstones of our Hindu culture and society. So you will see Hindus mostly, they are well-educated. They are medicine or any field, they excel, so they are very peace-loving people. American Hindu community appreciates and wishes you and everyone here a happy Diwali, which is falling on October twentieth, Monday. And I am happy to share that Broward schools are closed on that day. So it is wonderful to celebrate Diwali with all the family members. And there is a, there is a significance for Diwali. Let me just read it. Diwali is a significant day because it symbolizes the spiritual victory of light over darkness, good over evil, hate over love, and knowledge over ignorance. That's the celebration of Diwali. It is misnomered as Festival of Light. That is not true. May Diwali bring to all of you joy, love, and happiness, and may we dispel... Sorry, Mayor. So I was talking about the darkness with light and ignorance with the knowledge. So Diwali is very significant festival for us, and we love and wish better future for the entire humanity. In our culture, it is said that entire creation is one family. So when we pray, we pray for everyone, and we say Vasudhav Kotumkam. The entire creation is one family, and when we pray, we pray divine blessings to all. Loka Samastha Sukhnu Bhavantu. May the peace and goodwill prevail in the world. We are grateful to our adopted country, USA. It is truly land of opportunity where one could achieve anything, no matter who they are. We are law-abiding, peaceful people, and very proud of our successes and achievements. Hate should not and will never be tolerated. I hope all of us shall stand against hate. Freedom of speech does not mean that people are allowed to spread misinformation, and we have experienced. Our aim is to create and promote a strong Hindu-American identity and dispel misconceptions about Hindus. So may the coming years bring good health, wealth, joy, and success to all of you. As always, thanks and appreciation, Mayor and the city commission.
Thank you very, very much. Let's take a photo together, and you can stand over here.
And Mayor, I can say, here is my wife of fifty-five years.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much. Okay. Next. Okay. Next, we have the fire department presenting the winners of the annual Fire Prevention Week poster contest for local schools.
Good evening, Mr. Dodge, Mayor Castillo, Commissioners and City Administrators. Daniel Almiger, Division Chief and Fire Marshal for the great city of Pembroke Pines. Since nineteen ninety-two, the National Fire Protection Association has led Fire Prevention Week, the longest-running public safety observance in the nation. This year's theme, Charge Into Safety, actually reminds us to buy, charge, and recycle lithium-ion batteries. These batteries power so much of our daily life, but they can be dangerous if not handled properly. Here in Pembroke Pines, our kindergarten through fourth, fifth-grade students shared a vital message as we received over twelve-hundred creative posters and dioramas this year for our Fire Prevention Week poster contest. Their work shows how education and awareness starts early, how each of us can help prevent fires in our homes, and it's truly my honor this time to announce our first, second, and third-place winners. So as I call your names up, I ask that you please come up, and we're going to present all the kids with their awards.
You ready? All right.
All right, first one. Kindergarten, Zara Coleman. Second place, Leonardo De Santino. Third place, Lexi Perez. First place for first grade, oh, not here, but we're going to go to second place for first grade, Craig Clare. Third place, Alejandro Suarez. First place for second grade is Kai Ku, and he couldn't make it today because his dad, he's sick, so his dad came to get the award for him. Dad wasn't going to waste the opportunity. Definitely the biggest kid we've had so far at these presentations. Second place. Second place and second-time winner, Samir Ibrahim. For third grade, Kalen Echeverry. Second place, Lauren Del Campo. Third place, Louis Sanchez. First place, fourth grade, is Madison Vincent. Second place, Macario Francis. Third place, Joy Doos. Fifth grade, second place, Carlota Colmenares. And third place, Liam Materi. Now this year, we did do something different that we've never done before, and we have an award for the school with the most amount of participation. And this year's winner was Somerset Academy. Assistant Principal Acevedo and art teacher, Ms. Rocha, please come up. Yep, they're here.
You guys join us for a picture, please? All right, can you guys, can you guys come over here? Come over here. You four, hello? You four, come over here. Okay. Let's take a photo together. Hey, how about these kids, huh? And what a great fire department. Thank you very much, Pembroke Pines Fire Rescue. You guys are terrific. Thank you so very, very much. Now, you kids, you still have to do your homework. Congratulations. Okay. All right. They'll give it to them. They'll give it to them there. Okay. Let's settle down. How are you? You guys play soccer? Good. Okay. This is a proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, declaring Italian-American Heritage Month. Whereas October is recognized around the United States as Italian-American Heritage Month, a time-honored tradition, the rich culture of traditions, enduring values, and significant contributions of Italian-Americans throughout our nation's history have been outstanding. Whereas Italian-Americans have made invaluable contributions to American society in the fields of art, music, science, business, public service, community life, while maintaining a strong sense of cultural identity and family values. And whereas the city of Pembroke Pines is proud to celebrate the vibrant diversity of its residents always, and recognizes the important role that Italian-Americans have played in the building and enriching of our community. And whereas Tom Caminiti, where is he? The tallest Italian I know is a proud Italian-American and Pembroke Pines resident since nineteen ninety-six, and he significantly contributed to the city through his longtime service as an official DJ, community events, his work with the Southwest Focal Point Community Center, and his generous support for Relay of Life. You really are a great Pembroke Piner. A former radio personality and the founder of Tall Italian Productions, Tom has brought people together for decades through music, celebration, and community spirit. Now therefore, I Angelo Castillo, mayor of the greatest city in the world, Pembroke Pines, by the authority vested in me, and on behalf of the city commission, to hereby proclaim the month of October twenty-twenty-five as Italian-American Heritage Month. Tom, congratulations and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. How's everyone doing tonight? You guys doing good? I'm going to read the speech as well, and I do need my glasses. Thank you very much, Mayor Castillo and city commissioners. Appreciate you all. Thank you. It's a great honor. You know, there's been some great Italians throughout history. Leonardo da Vinci, Marco Polo, Don Corleone, Chef Boyardee. I'm just kidding about the last two, but you guys get where I'm going, right? When we say Manja in Italian, it means eat. Being Italian like many other cultures, food and family are everything. I had the best parents who taught me respect, faith, morals, and values. They moved to Pembroke Pines first and assisted me in finding my house here, and I miss everything about them. Special thanks to my family and friends for coming out tonight and supporting me. Love you guys, appreciate it. I'm a proud Pembroke Pines resident for almost thirty years. I've gotten to personally know my mayor, city commissioners, and many of my fellow residents. I love my city. Besides being a great place to live, it's a great place to work. I've been blessed to provide music and entertainment at several city events, and when I do my job right, people smile and feel good, and that in turn makes me feel good. Big thanks to Francie and Lana. Where are you girls? There's Lana back there. Francie, where are you at? Okay, Francie, these ladies are part of the special events department and always produce world-class events. They're the absolute best. They've been here forever, and the city is very lucky to have you both. Thank you. Give them a nice round of applause, please. Now, a lot of folks know me as a tall Italian for obvious reasons. Ron St. John actually gave me that nickname when we were on the radio at Magic One-O-Two-Point-Seven. And he kind of introduced me on stage one night, and it kind of stuck. And if you folks scoring at home, I'm six foot four, and let's be honest, the words "tall" and "Italian" don't usually go together in a sentence, right? All kidding aside, I'm very thankful and honored to receive this proclamation. I promise to continue to represent my nationality and my city in the best way possible. Besides Italian-American heritage, the month of October also represents breast cancer awareness, LGBTQ, Down Syndrome awareness, and national bullying prevention. As proud as I am of being Italian, I take pride in just being a good human being. Nationality, race, or religion shouldn't matter. I'll leave you with this thought. Life is short. Just be kind. Pembroke Pines and the rest of the world needs more of that. And the best part is you can spread kindness every day of every month. You don't need a special occasion. All right, enough with the mushy stuff. I need some pasta and garlic rolls. Grazie. Thank you all.
You are tall.
Yes, sir.
You know, when I was married, when I got married, I was six foot four. Look at me now. All right. I'll try this one. I wore that one out. Okay. Now. We have proclamations, folks. This is a proclamation, city Pembroke Pines declaring German-American Heritage Month. Whereas German-American Heritage Month recognizes and celebrates the lasting contributions of the more than forty-four million Americans of German descent, who represent one of the largest ancestry groups in the United States. German-Americans have played an essential role in shaping the culture, scientific, economic, and civic foundations of the United States since its start, bringing with them traditions of craftsmanship, education, innovation, and public service. Whereas German-Americans contribute to the culture... Whereas German-Americans contribute to the culture and enrich our communities through their language, food, music, festivals, strong values rooted in family hard work and democratic ideals. And whereas Karen Corin, a proud German-American and fifty-year resident of the city of Pembroke Pines, has showed extraordinary dedication to her community through decades of volunteerism and public service. Commissioner Good, would you join me, please? Ms. Corin's deep love for art and community was recognized through her appointment to the city's Art and Culture Board, a proud and symbolic moment in her life, especially as someone who overcame the adversity of being a refugee child born during World War II in Nazi Germany. Now therefore, I Angelo Castillo, Mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as German-American Heritage Month in the city of Pembroke Pines, and proudly honors Karen Corin for her enduring commitment to civic life and for exemplifying the strength, resilience, and cultural pride of German-American heritage. George, come on up.
Mayor. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, thank you.
You want to say a few words?
Yeah, a few words.
Yes.
We've been married sixty years, so I can beat fifty-five.
Sixty years?
Sixty years, sir.
Sixty. Okay.
Just, just to make you know.
Would you like to say a few words?
I would like to thank Tom for appointing me to the art, art and, I'm so nervous, art and culture board, and for the mayor to do, to give me this honor, and I'm real proud and I'm a little nervous, so I had a speech planned, but I'm sorry, it's out.
I, I, I wrote your speech. I, I. I wrote your speech. You ready?
Yes.
Say "I love you" in German.
Oh, ich liebe euch alle.
All right.
That's it?
That's it. Congratulations. Thank you so very, very much. Thank you. Okay. Two more and we get to work. The, uh, the events in the Middle East have resulted in, in a peace treaty that has been signed. Now, recent events show that things slip. But what is life if not two steps forward, one step back, another two steps forward? Sometimes one step forward, sometimes two steps back. But slowly over time, with perseverance and determination, you continue to move forward. And that's what we hope for in the Middle East. Whereas on October 7th, 2023, Hamas, a US-designated foreign terrorist organization and proxy of the Islamic Republic of Iran, launched an unprovoked terrorist attack and invaded southern Israel and brutally and indiscriminately murdered nearly twelve hundred men, women, and children while kidnapping two hundred and fifty more, including American citizens. And whereas the October 7th massacre marked the worst act of violence targeting Jews since the Holocaust, left Jewish communities worldwide in grief and deeply traumatized, and triggered a global wave of antisemitism unprecedented in the post-World War II era. Whereas antisemitism is not only a danger to the Jewish communities, but a corrosive force that undermines the social fabric of democratic societies. And whereas the city of Pembroke Pines rejects antisemitism in all forms, hatred, bigotry, extremism, and affirms the safety, dignity, and equal protection of all who call our city home. Now therefore, I Angelo Castillo, Mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, hereby declare and proclaim October 7th, 2025 as Municipal Day of Remembrance and Community Resilience. And on this day, we remember the lives taken on October 7th for the immediate return, and call for the immediate return of all hostages, which is now happening, and stand in solidarity with our Jewish neighbors and unconditionally condemn antisemitism in all its contemporary forms, along with every expression of hatred and bigotry. We reaffirm our city's unwavering commitment to safeguard the safety, dignity, and equal rights of every resident. Now, I want, I want you to know that I invited all three of our rabbis to be here to accept this reward in person. However, tonight is a Jewish holiday, and they could not be here with us. However, I want you to know that each of them is going to get a copy of this from all of you condemning hatred and antisemitism and wishing all peace and love throughout the world. Thank you very much. Commissioner Schwartz and Commissioner Good, will you join me, please? What is it? Yes. This is a proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines declaring International Air Traffic Controller Day, whereas air traffic controllers play a vital role in ensuring the safety, efficiency, and orderly flow of air traffic around the world. And whereas their professionalism, precision, and twenty-four-hour, seven-day dedication to help safeguard the lives of millions of passengers and flight crews each year. And whereas October 20th marks the anniversary of the founding of the International Federation of Air Traffic Controllers Association, and it's recognized globally as an international day of air traffic controllers. And whereas it is fitting to honor and recognize air traffic controllers for their critical contributions to aviation safety with special appreciation for those serving at North Perry Airport in Pembroke Pines and for their continued success. Now therefore, I Angelo Castillo, Mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, on the recommendation of Commissioner Jay Schwartz, and on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim October 20th, 2025 as International Air Traffic Controller Day. In the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, encourage all citizens to recognize and appreciate the essential service of air traffic controllers everywhere, especially those who diligently serve right here at North Perry Airport. And it occurs to me that now with the closure of the federal government, and we hope that that will be short-lived, air traffic controllers are even under greater stress than ever before. And please keep them in your thoughts and your prayers. They keep, they help to keep us safe, and they're good people, and they work very, very hard, and that's not an easy job. So I want to thank you all. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. October 20th is chosen because this is the founding anniversary of the International Federation of Air Traffic Controlled Associations. In 1961, representatives from twelve countries convened on October 19th and 20th in Amsterdam to establish the foundation of the IFA TCA. The idea of an international federation was proposed earlier in 1956 by Jacob Wachul, founder and first chairman of the Israel Air Traffic Controller Association. Thus, October 20th is used as professional day to commemorate the founding date and to honor contributions of air traffic controllers globally. So in effect, the date is symbolic, not because of a flight event or technological milestone, but because it marks the organizational birth of global body uniting air traffic control professionals. So what is this day all about? Well, in the early days of aviation, there was no system to coordinate aircraft in flight or on the ground, and the rapid growth of flights led to safety challenges. The first control tower actually emerged in the 1910, 1920s in rudimentary form, using visual signals, flags, and perhaps even the coordinated takeoff and landings. But the very first control tower is often credited at Cryon Aerodrome in 1920, that's in the UK, where an aerodrome control tower was first commissioned that included the windows in a three hundred and sixty degrees sphere. The very first control tower in the United States actually occurred in Cleveland in 1930. So all in all, air traffic controllers have been at the, at the front lines of keeping the public safe. Now, at this time, I'd like to bring forward a very special person, Shane Wilkinson, the manager of air, of the tower at North Perry Airport. And with that, Shane, I'm pleased to let the public know that you are not by yourself. You have yourself, and Ernesto, and Pat, and Mark, and Brett, Sam, Lucas, Adrian, Justin, and Jack, and they have Mayor a hundred and sixty-two years of air traffic control experience with an average of sixteen point two years of experience per controller. Not only that, not only that, every single one of them are veterans of our US Armed Services. They include the Navy, Air Force, and Army currently in the tower. The air traffic control operations, their operations included nine countries, both international and domestic: the United States, Japan, Afghanistan, Iraq, Saudi Arabia, Korea, Jordan, and Germany. They've worked some of the busiest airspace known to man, including Air Force bases throughout the world and our very own North Perry Airport. They've had positions as training managers, standards evaluation managers, facility and complex chief controllers, flight planning, chief air traffic control instructor on the United States Air Force Schoolhouse. But wait, there's more. During COVID, unlike the FAA, these men and women did not take a day off. Our tower did not close, it did not go down. They were there day in and day out. And so today, on October the 20th, we celebrate International Controller Day, but more importantly, Shane, it's the importance of North Perry Airport Tower operations is being recognized by your city for the incredible level of professionalism and commitment to the entire community.
Thank you very much. I don't really have a speech, but it's an honor to be on this side of a conversation. Usually if I have to talk to somebody or if it's an air traffic control situation, it's because you guys saw it on the news or something terrible happened. It's not often we get something like this. So the tower really appreciate it. We love providing safe and expeditious air traffic to the best of our ability, accommodating the community and the pilot requests. It's a difficult job where they're day in and day out, but we really do enjoy it. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much for your service. Let's take a photo. Tom? Thank you very much. Well done. Okay. And now we have, which district is it?
District one.
District one? The Natalie Belmonte Award for District One. Are they here? All right, come on down.
So Mayor, tonight, we're here to recognize the, um, how do I say it?
Joy Behassa.
Behassa family, they're in Rain Tree, and Mayor, I just want to show you their home.
Wow.
This is absolutely incredible, and again, this is our long, our long program that we've been working on for about eighteen months now, Mayor, where we recognize homes that just go above and beyond, that make our community proud, and hopefully motivate our neighbors to be a little bit better. So their home in Rain Tree is, is, it's just incredible with the landscaping, and this is the standard that we all should work towards.
Wow.
Commissioners, Mayor.
What a job. So let me, so let me, so let me ask, how, what, what's your secret?
I don't have a secret, actually.
How do you, how do you keep it so pretty?
Well, HOA does the lawn, and the rest, I just like to look, I like coming home and seeing pretty. That's it.
Well, you, you should come home very happy.
Yes, I gotta say, probably a lot of TLC, tender, love, and care, takes, takes a lot of effort to put into that beauty, so. That's right, that's right. So you come home and you talk to all the plants, right? They say if you talk to the plants, they grow better. So if you see her outside chatting with her plants, you know she's helping it to grow. So, but we have an award here for you for having a great yard award, and we also have a fifty-dollar Home Depot. You have to use it, you cannot give it to your HOA. So if you'd like to say a few words?
Well, I didn't even know this award actually existed, so it was a really nice surprise. And it's now I come home and knowing that I got the award for this month, it just makes me happy.
And you have a sign on your yard to prove it?
I do, I know. I've been getting calls from neighbors, "congratulate me." So thank you very much.
And, and our friends, and our, and our friend, and our friend Supervisor Ravino from Code Enforcement, you know, when they, when you see Code Enforcement, people running high, but they're really a bunch of nice guys who do a lot of good work for our community. What do you think of this yard?
Great work, great work, I appreciate it. Keep the neighborhoods nice and keep talking to the plants.
As long as they don't talk back.
Well, I need you to come and talk to my plants. But thank you very, very much and congratulate. Let's take a photo.
Mayor will be back.
Thank you so very, very much.
Mayor will be back again next month for District Two.
District Two is next month?
Yeah, Mayor, and just since I have a very captive audience, this is, there's a QR code up here, you can nominate great yard in your community, all right? Please nominate folks that you think go above and beyond. We'll come out and we'll look at the house. We usually don't get a full house like this, Mayor, so I want to take advantage of that. Thank you.
That's wonderful, that's wonderful. Hey, I see a lot of soccer players here. You guys soccer players? And I got a feeling you, you're, you're looking for new ball fields, right? All right, let's get to work. Let's get to work. Okay. Announcement of items to be pulled from the agenda?
No items, Mayor.
Okay. And we also have a presentation today from our commission auditor. I have one request from the public, but that's connected with item 25, so we'll wait for that item to come out. And our commission auditor is here to give us a presentation. Press a button. You're on.
There we go. Good evening, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor. Good evening, good to be here. Sorry to disappoint all the children here, but now comes internal auditing and accounting, so, great.
Now pay attention, because this involves you.
We're here to present two audit reports issued, as well as the draft audit plan that has been discussed with the commission. And here to make those presentations is Jamie Amos, Senior Manager of the Commission Auditor. Jamie has been a great addition to the Commission Auditor team, and here he will be to present the reports.
Fantastic.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the commission. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here today. As Eddie, is it on? Oh, yeah. As Eddie mentioned, my name is Jamie Amos, and I'm proud and happy to let you know that we have completed the 2025 audit plan. So I will be presenting the last two audits that we did today, and also the proposed audit plan for FY 2026. All righty, so we'll start with the lobbyists review. Okay, so for this particular review, what we did was focus on three areas. We looked at, for, first I've objected was to assess the impact value and transparency of the lobbyists operating on behalf of the city. Our scope included assessing the activities performed- Uh, our scope included assessing the activities performed by lobbyists by reviewing the outcomes and benefits derived from those expenditures. So we looked at three areas. The financial commitment, which the city pays the lobbyists every month based on terms outlined in the contract. The lobbyist activities, uh, these are, uh, engaged in activities that reflect and advance the city's priorities through a combination of formal and informal communication channels. And then also the impact and the value. So while lobbyist activities may not always lend themselves, uh, to a quantitative measurement, uh, they often deliver qualitative value. So a little bit about the background, I won't go into each one of these, but, um, the primary purpose of lobbyists is to influence government decision making on behalf of specific groups or organization. Lobbyists act as intermediaries, communicating the interests and concerns of their clients to lawmakers and government officials to shape legislation, regulation, and policies. Uh, the city has maintained contractual relationships with three lobbying firms over the past several years. Those are Eric's Consultants Incorporated, Smith, Bryan, and Myers Incorporated, and Lawrence J. Smith, Lawrence J. Smith, P.A. The lobbyist contracts are for one year, uh, period, and are renewed on an annual basis. Okay, I'll keep going. So just to give you a little bit about each one of those lobbyists. So Eric Consultants, and these are activities for the fiscal year 2023, 2024. So they are a state legislative lobbyist, uh, and they look at things that are important to the city. Um, they track legislation related to the city. They focus on protecting home rule, defending against unfunded mandates, and serving the city's charter schools, uh, and system. They helped to secure a $400,000 appropriation bill that passed both House and Representative. Unfortunately, it did not get signed by the governor, but they did help pass it. Uh, and they also helped pass, uh, HB 1259, which created a glide path for more equitable charter schools. So some of the important metrics, as you can see there, um, they, um, this is their 12th year that's been renewed for December 2024, uh, for $84,000. And as you can see, over the last five-year contracts, you can see those are the amounts that they have been paid. For Smith, Bryan, and Myers, uh, again, this is for 2023, 2024. Some of the things that they do, uh, they have met with legislative members regularly to discuss the city priorities, performed due diligence assessment for the city on providing property insurance to residents, uh, and have helped, um, establish, uh, nurtured strategic relationships with key decision makers associated with the Homewood Forum Center. Uh, as you can see, some of the important metrics there, they have been with the city for over eight years. And as you can see, the amounts that have been paid for them over the last five years have been $36,000. Lawrence J. Smith, uh, is the federal one. Um, they work on helping the city secure projects that is worth over $400,000 by getting in front of the right people, assist with identification of pursuits of grants that are of interest to the city, and preparing those grant documents. They meet with Congress staff regularly on behalf of the city and so forth. And as you can see there, uh, they have worked with the city for over 20 years. Um, and they were paid, uh, in the last couple of years, $50,000, uh, down from $84,000 before. So, the observation that we had while looking at this. So, the current, uh, report card assessment completed by the Assistant City Manager with input from the city manager focuses on four categories as outlined below, which include the work completed on time, quality of work, are all requirements of the contract being met, and departmental overall satisfaction. As you can see, the scores for each one of those, and they have been recommended for renewal, uh, for this past year. So while the existing categories are generally appropriate, they do not account for the lobbyist's impact or value for the, to the city. So given that inherent difficulty in quantifying such contributions, the assessment framework should include a mechanism aligned, um, to the lobbyist's activities with the city's long-term strategic plan. So we recommend that the city require each lobbyist vendor to explicitly map their activities to the city's long-term strategic plan or annual priorities. This alignment should be incorporated into the report card review process as a formal criterion for contract renewal. And as you can see, the management response, they concur with, uh, our recommendation. Um, any questions so far about the lobbyist review?
Very comprehensive, very thorough, thank you.
Okay. Um, I can keep going with some of the stuff, but it's kind of, uh, some of the same information. But, uh, if you have any questions, please feel free.
If anyone has questions.
Yeah, I wanted to know if there was, from what you gathered or in addition to this, a report of everything that they brought forth every year? Or is that something that we would get from the lobbyists? I assume that that's something that you might have looked at in terms of ROI.
Yes, so they do, uh, send a report on a regular basis, and it's incorporated in your packets. And one of the things that we discussed was that that should be pulled outside so that you all are, are sure to be able to see that information, because I think it's buried in the package that you do receive, so, um.
In the packet that we received from the lobbyists?
Uh, from, uh, from your community agenda, yeah. So the lobbyists do do a, uh, report each year, uh, which explains all of their activities and things of that nature. Uh, and you all do receive it, but it's kind of buried in there.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, and one of the things they're gonna do is start putting that out to make sure that you all.
Yeah, I think, and maybe this is a point for administration, um, especially when we're renewing those kinds of contracts. Um, I believe we did this for the, um, for the grant writing. There was a thorough, uh, question as to how much they brought in every single year and how much we paid them out. So something needs, that needs to be a standard included whenever we do the contract or maybe on a after-session basis, depending on, on, on the, the, the way that this is done, because obviously they, they run a couple of different schedules. But I know that the reports are given to us by the lobbyists, but to be able to see that in a comparison value across all of our different lobbyists would be very, very useful.
Commissioner Good?
I, I just want to, are you done with the, uh, with the lobbyist presentation? Or you got more?
Um, there's a little bit more, but if you want to, we can move.
No, I want to wait until you finish with the lobbyist's presentation, then I'll make my comments.
Okay, uh, just a little bit more. Just one, another thing is that we looked at is that the activities that the lobbyists were doing did align with the contract. Uh, the contract, uh, didn't necessarily have service level agreements in there, but it did align with that. And then also, we did look at the payments that you all are giving to the lobbyists, and they did align with the amount in the contract. So, that will be the end of that.
So Mr. Mayor, if I may, um,
Yes, go right ahead.
Then speak to this then. Yeah, so, um, yeah, the, the lobbyist, uh, contracts are, are really rather hard, as you state, to, you know, do an audit, because it's more qualitative than it is quantitative. I mean, there are times when our lobbyists, uh, they win some and they lose some, right? I mean, that's the name of the game, I guess, when you're up in Tallahassee. And even when they win, sometimes they lose because those projects will get vetoed, uh, you know, by the time it gets to us. My, 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 my concern with this to my colleagues is that it's a qualitative process. And when you talk about, uh, what is the success of a lobbyist, you want to know that they're talking actually to, you know, state legislators and things like that. And, um, because we do. You know, we are engaged just as much or even more than a lobbyist in terms of, of getting, uh, programs supported, you know, for our cities. And it's embarrassing sometimes to go, uh, to a, uh, you know, to a representative that might not be necessarily in the county but is outside of the county, uh, and, and start talking, and they say, "I'm sorry, I don't know anything about what you're talking about." That, to me, is a qualitative matter that should be evaluated. And so when we talk about scoring, it's cities, a, a city staff person who is scoring along with some input from the city manager. But my opinion is, is that we should be scoring too. We should be participating in that scoring process. So whenever we go to Tallahassee and, and we're saying, "Hey, we want to have access to some of these legislators," I mean, Mr. Mayor, you just recently went up to, to, to fight a very important battle for us. And I'm certain you have firsthand experience in what the lobbyists were doing. And that's way more valuable than what a staff member would be doing who sits in the office here.
And you, and you can't, and you can't really quantify it. It's, it's, the lobbyists that we use in Tallahassee and, um, and Washington are essentially our ambassadors to those places. And, um, when we're not there, because we can't be there full-time, they are there. And far from, uh, the, the value that they give in helping us to secure, uh, either certain language in, in, in a, uh, in a, in a statute that is missing or funds which amount in the many millions of dollars for charter schools or, um, uh, or appropriation items that we very much need that they get passed and then the governor doesn't sign, uh, are the many millions more that aren't taken away? Because if you're absent in Tallahassee or Washington, you're on, you're on, you're on the menu. And so we have, uh, consistently over the years, picked people who are liked on a bar, a bipartisan basis. They're not all liked on that basis. Who can present, uh, the best possible image and keep us from harm, more than help us, but keep us from harm. And so they are our adjunct sort of ambassadors to those cities and to those legislators. And the, the information and the insights that they share with us along with their other clients is invaluable in terms of, and, and when you call them, they're always available to answer a question. "Hey, what's going on with this bill? Who are the major players involved in this issue? How can I get in front of so-and-so?" That's what they do. And, um, um, in my opinion, they've, they've, they've done a, they've done a great job.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, that's exactly what I'm making reference to, because we have direct experience with that service to our city that I think that we should participate. And, and so I would like to make a recommendation on top of what's being presented to us by our auditors that the city commission participate in the scoring as well, not just the city staff. I think it's a, it's everybody, so we should also weigh in on what our observations are in terms of what, uh, what performance that they're doing for us. So that would be my recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Nope, that'll be it on that.
Anybody else?
Just, I had a couple more comments.
Yeah.
Um, I, I do very consistently see, obviously from, um, Eric's Consultant. We see them very often at events, things like that. I think in the, to make it a little bit more quantitative, how many meetings are set up particularly to speak up, uh, up in Tallahassee to speak on our behalfs? If we go up for Broward Days, are there meetings set up? This needs to be statistically, you know, i- i- I believe it brings some statistics out. The, the metrics need to be, be there. And I think that that's something that we need to incorporate in all of our different, um, all of our different, uh, contracts with this. I, in, in the sense of how easy it is, and it's relatively hard to, to manage that, but how easy it is through the, that consult, uh, through that lobbyist to get to where we need to get. Um, and in addition to that, the reports that we get, I, I don't know if there's a part of the contract that we need to put in or say that we are expecting more. Some of the, some of the reports that I receive, I read, and I think, okay, this is bringing a lot of value because I don't get that information elsewhere. But I, I'll be frank, when I read what comes from the congressional level lobbyists, I feel like I'm reading a New York Times headline. It is not in-depth, it is something that, and, and I don't know what you guys feel because we don't get to talk to each other about these things. But to me, that, I, I read the news. And what is written on those reports is mostly what the administration is doing and not anything particular to what we are doing here in Pembroke Pines, what may affect us. Sometimes there is a, a line on there regarding what, um, what grants we may go after, but then there's no report as to if we can go after those grants, what can we do for those grants? What, you know, what is, I, I, what I'm saying is, I do not want to pay $36,000 to get a report of what I could get watching, like, the news or, or reading the news at some point. It needs to be more in-depth, and we need to expect more of, of them. And, and partially, yes, it is the deterrence as to what they could be taking away, but that too needs to be documented. That too needs to be part of the, of the reporting. And, and I frankly don't think that the, what is being presented to us currently is, is much of value, at least they may be doing something, but I am not seeing it. I am not getting the facts down on the ground as to what's going on, and we need to be a little bit more scrupulous as to what we're receiving from our ends. Because things can be, are being done. We're just not necessarily on the line item of, of what those things are.
Mr. Dodge, did you capture all of that, uh, uh, information about the lobbyists and how we can sub, better provide metrics and, and the other information?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd also like to do just, can I, I'm just gonna make a motion that, uh, that the city commission participate in the scoring for the lobbyists. That's my motion.
I think, I think we all, we all sort of, uh, agree by consensus if, if, take a look at that. And I know that the city attorney is gonna want to take a look at that as well in terms of our participation. If you can come back to us with a memo or, uh, outlining how, how this can be reframed a little bit better.
As well as, and if I may add, what is, maybe we can gather from all of us, what we expect to see in these reports? What we would like to see? Have that be part of the contractual obligation that they bring to us? Some, something of, of what we're asking for.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to, um, I, I think there's a, I think there's two conversations. We have our, we have our Tallahassee conversation and the DC conversation. I want to focus on the Tallahassee. I think we have a, we have more control over outcome in Tallahassee than we do in Washington DC. I think it'd be beneficial for our lobbyists to provide a scorecard of each member of the Broward delegation that's either working for or against the city of Pembroke Pines. It's vitally important that we know where the Broward delegation stands with our community. I think that education piece is vital. I believe that the, um, uh, that our lobbyists who work with others certainly have a sense of which House rep they can go to for support, which senator they can count on to shut us down. I think it's, I think it's self-evident of who they can work with and who they can't. But what's not included in the reports are those individuals who are either for or against us. And I think that would be to tie in the value. I think, I think finding out what's happening when, when it's not the six o'clock news, when it's in committee, who's engaging and who's not picking up the phone. I think that would be the best bang for our buck. Okay. Anything else?
One more, uh, Mayor, and I thank you for spending time with me on the Zoom, going through all this. Um, I agree with Commissioner Good. Thank you, great recommendation. Uh, and Commissioner Rodriguez, um, is right on the money with the federal report. I understand that's a completely different animal. I've worked in Washington, I get it. It's very challenging. But it needs to be more than New York Times. It has to be more in-depth. Um, I will say just, uh, Eric's Consulting is the one that I mostly interact with. And to echo what the mayor's saying, they are very, very responsive, even during session, which is a very challenging time. Um, and I would, uh, also say that they've also been very successful, uh, Candace Erickson and Lauren and their group in particular. I also want to say that, um, I did not think that Pembroke Pines would have, as a city, such a successful session. Uh, not just with these representatives, but representatives that we had through our city attorney in particular, uh, uh, related to Hayden Glade. Um, I, I do think we've accomplished a great deal, but more can be done on the reporting, and I look forward to that, uh, specifically to be able to look and quantify what, what dollars are available. My priority, when we have to re-up this again, will be protecting home rule. It's, it's just something that I know has been a losing battle for several years now. I wholeheartedly believe that communities, counties, and cities have the jurisdiction and the right to govern their populations. So I will put that as a flag, uh, on Tallahassee-based lobbying uh, for our next, um, lobbying contract. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank, and that'll, that'll conclude our discussion on the item. And I want to thank you very much, both of you and your firm, for your good service to the city of Pembroke Pines. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, we can move on to the Waste Pro audit.
Okay.
Okay. So, for Waste Pro, our objective was to assess the vendor's contract compliance related to billing and payment processing and management of customer complaints. Uh, the billing and payment process, the city oversees the collection of the customer payments for solid waste services and is responsible for remitting payments to Waste Pro of Florida. Each week, an account, an accountant prepares and verifies Each week, an account, an accountant prepares and verifies the vendor payment documentation using a payment report generated by the city's technology services team as the primary reference. The payment to Waste Pro is determined by deducting the applicable administrative and franchise fee from the total customer payments with the remaining balance paid to the vendor. To ensure accuracy, all documentation is reviewed and approved by the accounting supervisor in the finance department before the check payment request form, which is, which includes the calculated payment to Waste Pro is sent to the accounts payable division for processing. That's the process for the, the payment. Now, as far as the customer complaints and service program, under the agreement between the city and Waste Pro of Florida, the vendor is required to respond within 24 hours to customer complaints. All complaints must be recorded electronically and remain available for review by the city's contract administrator. A few back, uh, background notes. So, the current contract term between the city of Pembroke Pines and Waste Pro Florida Incorporated is from September 2022 through September 2028. Pursuant to the city's waste disposal and collection agreements, waste services rates and overall billing are evaluated and adjusted annually based on the Consumer Price Index provisions defined in the contracts, with the most recent information available on the city's website. And also residential customers receive a consolidated bill that includes water, sewer and waste disposal charges. So, the observation for this particular one. So according to the contract with Waste Pro, a comprehensive customer service program aimed at minimizing recurring customer complaints and service requests is required. Within this program, Waste Pro is obligated to complete any missed collection with, within 24 hours of the notification. This is managed by Waste Pro through the Track Easy system, which is an online platform used by municipalities to facilitate tracking of this information. Now, we receive the Track Easy report from the period of July 2024 through June of 2025.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you for a second. Soccer people, we will be with you in just a second. Just hang in there, I know you have school tomorrow, I know that this is important to you. Please hang in there, we will get to you very, very quickly. Go right ahead.
No problem, I'll try to make it as fast as possible. Um, so, uh, that Track Easy report had 181 complaints. Of those complaints, the report suggested that 41% of those complaints were not resolved within the 24-hour timeframe. Now however, upon further, um, inquiry with the city and Waste Pro, we learned that Waste Pro historically experienced challenges with inputting timely updates into the Track Easy system. Waste Pro has indicated that these matters are generally resolved in a timely fashion. However, the administrative staff responsible for entering the complaints resolution into the Track Easy system often delays updating the record once an issue is closed. So as a result, the system reports may reflect that complaints were not resolved within the required timeframe, even when they were. Due to this efficiency in the reporting process, we could not validate the actual timeliness of the complaint resolution. And the city could not effectively monitor vendor performance in this area utilizing the current report. Because Waste Pro administrative staff is challenged in updating the system to reflect when a situation has actually been resolved. This was captured in the contract performance report card for the quarter ending June 2025, where the city scored Waste Pro a rating of five out of 10 for complaint resolution and a 10 out of 15 for service accuracy. Now for further context, the city services over 39,000 accounts, with each account receiving collection twice a week, resulting in over four million collections per year. During the audit period of July 2024 through June 2025, the Track Easy report reflected 181 total complaints. This equates to approximately 0.004525% of total collections. So moreover, this figure does not account for any complaints that were later determined to be invalid, meaning that the actual rate of the valid complaints are even lower. So, we recommended that the city work with the vendor to establish a remediation plan to fix the deficient process related to the Track Easy system process for complaint resolution enclosure. The city should continue to monitor the report to verify that the Waste Pro has corrected its internal processes to support accountability, service and quality improvements. So that's the main one for that. Any questions about that? There is a slide after this, but it's just the management, it's just the management response. You wanna see the recommendation?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any questions on that?
A quick comment. I have spoken with a Waste Pro representative, because I did, after you provided this to me, I have concerns with the reporting, although I do think they're a very good vendor for the city. I also have a concern, which I guess this has to do for another day and that would be brought to the administration on the city ordinance. I don't know if this is accurate, but I believe the ordinance we're operating under when it comes to the fee collection and, and payment of our vendors is somewhere around 33 years old. I don't know if that's accurate. I, I personally believe we have to review everything, uh, in a more time-friendly basis as opposed to over several decades. So I just wanna put on record, since we have to speak in the sunshine to my colleagues, I, I personally will look at it because I wanna make sure that we're collecting the fees that we need to as a city. But the vendors are being paid in a more timely fashion, so, thank you.
Thank you. We should be good.
And, uh, can you go slip the, flip the page here again? Where you were showing the four million accounts?
Oh.
Yeah, I just wanna point out that, uh, you know, if you got four million collections per year and 181 complaints, I'd say that service is pretty darn good.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, so.
Yeah.
But, um, and, and in regards to what my colleague, the vice mayor was speaking to, yeah, I, I don't know if you're gonna get into it, but maybe that should be a part, another, uh, layer pulled back on top of what this audit was. So I, I recommend that we go just one layer more. And Mr. Mayor, in time, uh, in consideration of time, I'll reserve everything else later.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else on this? Do you have more?
We have one more report.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you to pause just for a second for, for a question because I got kids that need to go to school.
Yeah.
Does anyone, I don't, the, the soccer, uh, people are here for item 17. Does anyone have an intention to pull item 17 from the, uh, from the consent?
Yes.
Okay. Hang in there, we'll get to you.
All right, last one, last one, last one. And I will be out your way, okay. So.
It is a discussion of the proposed audit plan for 2026, so that might be lengthy discussion? Uh, what's? No, the proposed audit plan for this coming fiscal year. Um, so if that's gonna be a lengthy discussion.
Is it possible for you to come back in, in the first meeting in November?
Oh, we could just pause and we could present it after you do, um, that's.
That's acceptable?
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, just hang in there.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much and we will come back to you. Okay. On the consent item. Consent consists of items one through 19 plus addendum number one. What is your pleasure?
Pulling number 17.
17 for Commissioner Rodriguez, hold on. Any others?
Mayor, the, um, apologize, the, uh, the procurement, that's under regular?
That's on regular agenda.
That's regular, that's two readings, correct? Is that two reading, uh, ordinance or is it a one-time shot?
That is, uh, that's on first reading ordinances, so that's, that's an ordinance. That's not on consent.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay? I need a motion for items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 18, 19 and addendum one.
Motion made.
Uh, consent, uh, items moved by Commissioner Rodriguez.
Second.
Second, seconded by the vice mayor, any discussion? Any from the public? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Show passes unanimously. Uh, Commissioner Rodriguez, you're recognized for item number 17.
Motion to approve funding in the amount of $9,707,962 for the year. One project's included in the three-year strategic plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice mayor, Commissioner, you're recognized.
I can have my comments after the, if the public is here to speak? Is anybody here to speak on, for the public?
I had, I had, I had one person submitted, Coach Dennis Valenzuela? Valenzuela, would you come forward? There's a button there that you press that makes the light turn green, on the bottom, on the bottom. You're on. Your name and your affiliation for the record, please.
Uh, good morning, uh, good evening, Mayor.
And almost morning.
Commissioners, um, still working. Dennis Valenzuela, I coach at West Pines United. I also coached at Pembroke Pines Optimists and I'm the varsity coach at MacArthur High School. Uh, I've been in this community for quite a long time. And it has come to my attention that, um, last time we were here, the proposed, uh, monies that were allocated for our parks, specifically our soccer parks, uh, was denied in some manner. Am I correct to say that?
It, the, 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 the plan was part of a bond issue which, uh, the public did not, uh, adopt. However, it, we didn't ask them about the pro, we presented the projects, but they didn't vote yes or no on the projects. They voted yes or no on the bond that would pay for the projects. The way item 17 is set up, we're using, we're using, uh, uh, funds that the city had pledged. These are funds we have. And the spending of this $9 million would result in no tax increase to anyone in Pembroke Pines. So this is, this is basically us adding another layer to the budget that will allocate these dollars not just to our parks and not just to provide, uh, uh, new playing fields for, for, for soccer, but to renovate the other parks that are in the strategic plan and begin the design work for, uh, a, a significant portion of our traffic agenda. That's what the item is.
Correct. Well, I'm here on behalf of the students at MacArthur that live in Pembroke Pines. The players and, and young, young men, ladies that play at Pembroke Pines Optimists and at West Pines, we need an outlet for these kids. I understand that there's, uh, use of the fields by football, base, basketball, baseball and all the others, but soccer-specific fields are, are very, uh, important for us. Only because the younger kids don't have really access to these fields. So our really young youth, uh, academy, uh, players, ages six to 12, you know, if the fields are flooded or they're, they're not in use, um, they have nowhere to go. So if we can allocate this, uh, find, find it, some way to allocate these funds for our fields and our turf fields that allow us to share in these, uh, dire times with the, with the weather change and whatnot, that would really help us out and not just us, but the entire community, uh, both east and west pines.
Yes, sir, we appreciate that. Okay, Commissioner.
Thank you, I have, I, I really appreciate everyone coming out. At least you got a civic lesson as to what we do here at City Hall. I hope you guys, um, I really appreciate the patience, but it's also a, a very big portion of what we do here to do those presentations at the beginning, all these other things. But this to me is particularly important because you guys are the future, talking to the little kids, you guys are the future of the city, the future residents. Hopefully you're able to stay after you grow up here, you know, come back from college and be able to even coach some of these teams in the future. But this is really important and for you to have the knowledge of what we're doing at City Hall to give back to the community in that sense. So I really do appreciate that for number one. I think in, in seeing all of these families here, one thing that comes to mind is, um, some inadequacies that we had when we were doing the bond presentations. We did do these bonds presentations 6:30 PM in the evening in different locations. And while we spread the city and we did maybe 40 town halls of, of that sort, I don't believe we did enough justice to coming to you all and to know, and for you to be aware of, of what that bond included for some of these parks. And, and that is, you know, past, but I think it's a lesson for us at the city when we are incorporating things that includes our parks, our younger families. We need to do our best to reach them where they are and that's maybe going to a park during soccer games or having a meeting right after practice or something of that sort. So if any of you have ideas for how we can engage with you in the future and have your opinion, you know, either given to us or, um, or how we can better engage with your community because sometimes we have a headspace of doing town halls and, and that sometimes isn't adequate enough for families who are cooking dinner at night and doing, and doing all those things. So we wanna have everybody's, uh, vision and everybody's vision for the future of Pembroke Pines in mind. And if you guys, you, all of our emails are online, obviously. Any ideas that you have or opportunities that you have for us to go speak to you all about city manners or something in the future? What is the best way to engage with the community that you guys bring here? Because coming all, all of you to City Hall sometimes just isn't, isn't the best way, even though you guys are all here today. But if we want to continue to engage and hear your opinions on all these future projects, especially when they impact, you know, your parks, what, what's the best manner of, about, uh, going? That would, would be my, um, my suggestion for you all to, to let us know and, and we can continue inquiring and, and making sure our communication towards your community is, is very present.
Uh, City Commissioner and Mr. Mayor, um, I'm Neil Charlie, I'm the president of the club. Thank you, Dennis, I was running late, so I guess he took over for me, thank you. One of the ways you can come, every year roughly in December, um, we invited Mr. Castillo when he was a commissioner to come out to the park every year in December. We get everybody together, the whole club, and we have a celebration. You're welcome to come speak then and speak to every parent.
I don't wanna interrupt celebrations with boring City Hall stuff, but when we.
It's fine, we allow him to speak, everybody else can.
Have these things that come up, I would really like to be able to, you know, provide that information to you, you know. We have some restrictions as to what we can say and not say i- in that regards, but for, for our communications to reach out to you all, especially when, when it's matters concerning our parks, I think would be really important.
That is fine, just so you know, after our celebration, we actually invite the parents in so we can tell them what's the future of the club. That's when you guys are welcome to speak.
That would be a great opportunity, thank you. And besides you guys, I do have a couple of their comments, anyone have anything in particular?
As in us up here?
Yeah, or I can just continue with my comments in regards to, to the club being here.
I could either wait or.
Okay, I'll fin, I'll finish up my comments then. And, um, and maybe it might be best for Christina to come up, is she here? Yes. So one of the reasons that I also wanted to pull this item was because we were, I received an email from a constituent in, in continuous conversations with constituents regarding what we're doing in the strategic plant for the senior center and for the seniors. Obviously, we have things like parks as part of this. But I wanted to make it, uh, I guess, known in the public that, that is something we are working on, even if it's not necessarily in this year one. Mostly, I think Christina, we were talking about, um, and if you can briefly update us on that, there is no space at our senior center in regards to parking. There might be space inside the building, but no space in the parking. So that is something we're working on currently. Can you just give us an update so that people can understand why that may not be part of the plan right now, but it doesn't mean we're not working on it?
Right, so when we came to you all in August with the workshop, uh, we had presented to you a pared-down plan for projects. Uh, when we originally started, we were $296 million, that included the bond and the $66 million we have in fund reserve. And we came to you and said, this is an alternate. We pared down the recreation projects to about $47 million and the road and bridge projects to about $50 million. And, um, what we presented to you at the time was a three-year plan and tonight we're asking you just to fund year one. To your point about the senior center, uh, I spoke with the city manager and we are looking at that for future years. But in this first year, we just wanted to focus on what we originally presented to you. Of course, you all have the ability to change that if you choose. We are looking at the senior center, as was said at the school board meeting last week. We're looking at maybe talking to them about expanding to the north for some additional parking because while the senior center, we can put more programming there, we can't, there's no point if we don't have any place to park them. So we are trying to come up with some solutions, but before we come up with concrete plans, you know, we just wanna fill out some of these other ideas regarding the senior center.
Okay, I appreciate it. And I, I wanna point out also to my colleagues, um, a lot of, a, a couple, not a lot, but a couple items on the list do include some amenity changes to the surroundings of our public schools, of our traditional public schools. And obviously, we are having that conversation with the school board regarding redefining. Um, if we pass this tonight, it doesn't mean we're going to be starting this, you know, tomorrow by any means. And the school board is getting closer and closer as to what they want to define and redefining. So I want to be cognizant that some of these, uh, schools are part of conversations in, in regards to redefining. And I don't necessarily want to put in funds at the moment or designate funds right now if that is something that changes on, like at the school board level. You know, we've talked about Walter C., we've talked about, um, there's conversations about Palm Cove and, and, um, either, um, uniting some schools, closing some schools, like all of that conversation. I'm sure, like, we all know, but, um, I'd like us to be cognizant that that is a conversation being had and because it's an, it's an item here, we may need to make some changes as to this, um, this thing moving forward because the school might not be there and we don't necessarily need, you know, crosswalks, everybody uses them. But, you know, in, in regards to, to that particularly, so to keep a little asterix or something on, on the side of some of these projects.
Okay.
Well, and those, if I may, Mayor, those items that were selected, it was a combination of discussions with the manager and with Carl Kennedy. But there are items in years two and three that are very similar. So there may be a school that is not on the table for discussion, that we might want to consider that project versus one that is, and maybe interchange them in that way.
I, I think that would be really useful because, and maybe we'll have more clarity on it after the next workshop that they have, maybe a couple Tuesdays from now, um, to, so that we can keep an eye on that and just like tick off what, you know, in which direction. Maybe we can bring in something that they've definitely decided that they're not going to look at in regards to redefining.
Yep.
Um, other than that, I really appreciate the work on this. Um, I said it during the workshop, I really just want to get done um, and make sure that we're moving forward. And, and a lot of this is simply, um, the design. So whether we move forward on certain things, at least we have more clarity as to what that might look like and how much that would cost in the future, because I know that some of these have been in, in, in thoughts for, for a while. And it might be something that, like, now we're going, now after seeing the designs, we're going to need a little bit more of funds and, and things like that. So I think it gives us a good grasp as to what we could be doing in the future.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I want to thank every parent, not just the children, but the parents who are sitting here tonight. Um, I, I, we should call you guys out too in a good way, for coming out to City Hall on a Wednesday. You do have school tomorrow, uh, and I take two children to school every morning as well, so I know that's a, that's a process. So thank you for coming. Um, I also wanted to make mention, uh, I, before I get to, uh, what, what we were speaking on, I too was contacted Commissioner Rodriguez on, uh, Focal Point and the investments. So I called Director Jay Schecter. He was with his twin grandbabies at the moment. He still took my call, uh, even though I offered to call him back. We have added parking spaces and we used a four-hundred-thousand-dollar grant to build street parking, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Manager Dodge, over the last few fiscal years. So there certainly is improvement, uh, in, at the Focal Center. In addition to that, uh, it is, in fact, a model not just in Florida, but throughout the United States. We have folks that visit from all over the country to, to see what we do at Focal Center. Uh, Director Schecter has between four and five hundred seniors who are there daily. So, uh, I understand we receive emails, but oftentimes it's really interesting where facts separate from fiction. I don't think there's another city in Broward County, potentially even in the state of Florida, that does more for its seniors than the city of Pembroke Pines. I know that doesn't have to do with soccer. I apologize. I didn't want to mention that. With respect to, um, what's on the table here tonight, boys and girls, uh, like Commissioner Rodriguez said, you are the future. Uh, but more importantly, I'm happy that you're here so you understand that, yes, we are elected officials, but it's different receiving an email than seeing you come here. So I hope this isn't the last time. This is only the first time we vote on this. We're going to have to vote on it again. I hope you can ask Mom and Dad to come out another Wednesday night, maybe for a little bit. Maybe we'll take this first on the agenda so you remind us what we're voting for. And I, 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 I will say, I cast, I will, at the appropriate time, cast this vote with great conviction because even though it's in the design phase for Chapel Trail Soccer Park to receive two-hundred-thousand dollars, I think is a good thing. I think, I think that West Pine Soccer Park receiving another two-hundred-thousand dollars in the design phase is a very good thing as well. And there are other parks that also would benefit from this. And what I find interesting is governments aren't hedge funds. When we take in money, it's supposed to be spent back in the community for you all. So I'll get off my soapbox now, but I did want to mention that. So thank you, parents. Thank you, students, for being here. Thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez, uh, for pulling the item and giving me the opportunity to speak.
Anyone else? Commissioner Good?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, seeing this item tonight, it, uh, for me, it's a little bit, um, it's, uh, so fast-tracked that I didn't expect it. I know that we had a, a meeting and, uh, we talked generally speaking about the strategic plan and how we would try to move forward, but we didn't speak specific projects necessarily. And now they're being presented to us. Um, I thought that we were going to have another workshop. We were going to have some more conversation. I mean, just with listening to my colleagues talking about a parking lot for the senior center that would fall under these facility improvements here. And so, but yet we didn't get an opportunity to express, you know, what we believe, how important that was too. Um, I will say that, uh, that there are a number of projects here, particularly in the, uh, you know, the community facilities and recreation facilities. I don't disagree with it. Matter of fact, I think we should do all of them. I think we should do all of them that we actually put out in the strategic plan because that's one of the things in my communities people speak about. Now, I represent one of the most historic sections in, 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 in Pembroke Pines. And we have the oldest parks and the oldest facilities. And yet there's very, very limited things that are being done to those facilities. Uh, Coach, uh, first and foremost, I'd like to say thank you for your service that you do with, uh, MacArthur High School because that school serves a great deal of my community. And I appreciate you recognizing the Pines Optimists as well too, because that is the oldest park in the city. It's the oldest sports park, and yet it gets very minimal upgrades. And I want to tell you why, because that's the only park that the city actually does not own. That park is actually owned by Broward County, Broward County Aviation. And guess what? We're on a lease. Just a couple of years ago, we had a big fight with them because they wanted to kick us off. They were going to kick us off our parks. Now, any of you who are familiar with the east side, if you lose the Pine Optimist Park, what do you have left? There's literally nothing. Now, I'd like to see us continue to try to move and, 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 and build the park just as we are doing in some of these projects. I mean, we have Chapel Trail and West Pine Soccer. You know, we're, there's two-hundred-thousand dollars each. Those are just design costs. Why? Because there's thought about artificial turf. What a great opportunity to have fields that are consistent for you.
Right.
I mean, that's a, 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 a great asset to the city. And I personally would love to see one, and I've been begging for one. She's smiling, you can't see it, but for the Pines Optimists as well. And I can't, we, we are still struggling to get to that point. But I will say that many of these, uh, you know, community facilities, recreation facilities are on this list today. I don't disagree with it all. I, I, I see some of the projects here that are, are going to touch District One. And I really think my community in particular in District One are just as desperate to get the upgrades as, as you are to get your, uh, parks upgraded as well. What I am having issues with here on this particular item is, is I cannot agree to these roadway and infrastructure improvements. Those, I think, we really, really need to have more conversation. Because when I look at that list, I'm going to tell you, there is not one project that touches District One. Not one. Not one. So we have a five-million-dollar, uh, community facility, recreation facility improvement proposal and a four-million-dollar roadway and infrastructure improvement. And I tell you, I can't, I cannot vote on this item knowing that the roadway and infrastructure improvements are, need to have more conversation amongst us. I'd like to make an offer, uh, uh, as a motion, uh, that I can support, is that we bifurcate these two items. We bifurcate the, um, the community facilities, recreation facility, and vote on that separately, the five-million dollars that's being presented to us tonight, because I believe that I can support that tonight. The, uh, and separate it out from the, um, from the roadway infrastructure improvements, and we vote on that separately as well. However that goes, but I cannot approve, I, I, I will not support this item as a whole, but I will support it if it's bifurcated. So I'd like to make a motion to bifurcate the two items and vote on them separately.
Is there a second? I'm not hearing a second.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. Before we proceed with, with that discussion, can somebody, uh, are you clear on what we're talking about? So we're going to have one vote. It's one item, but we're going to bifurcate. So the first thing that we're going to do is talk about the...
Mayor, I don't want to get heavy, but I haven't, I haven't spoken yet.
Hold on. I'll call you, I'll call on you as soon as I'm done. So the, the first thing, the first thing that we're going to do is we're going to vote on the parks issue. And then we're going to vote on the, uh, traffic items. Where Commissioner, under his motion, if it passes, wants that. If the motion fails, we're back to the original motion. Does everybody understand? Okay. Commissioner Schwartz, you had a question.
All right. Are we on the motion now or the original item?
We're on the motion. There's been a motion made to bifurcate with a second.
Well, typically, we will wait until all of us speak before motions are retained, so.
The Commissioner made a motion. Do you wish to speak on the item?
It's on a, it's on a motion to bifurcate.
No, you, you could speak on both of them.
August twenty-sixth, the City Commission had a workshop that lasted pretty much all day. City management was tasked with bringing forward a solution to things that we need in honor the vote that was taken by the people, which was nearly two-to-one rejecting the majority of the items that we're looking at this evening.
That's incorrect.
If I may, sir?
No, sir. You're out of line. That is not what they voted on. They voted on the financing for the plan. We never placed the, we explained the projects to them, but we never asked for approval on the projects. We asked for approval on the financing. The, every one of the projects in this plan is in the city's strategic plan, which was adopted by the city unanimously. So that is incorrect, that they voted against any project. They voted against the financing. You may continue.
All right, sir. So when the draft plan was presented, I supported the draft plan. But when it came to the final approval in December of last year, I voted against it. So it was not unanimous.
Okay.
Let's please be accurate. We have a lot of people watching.
It was, it was adopted. It is the strategic plan of the city.
Yes, the majority was adopted, but it was not unanimous.
The city of Pembroke Pines. You may continue.
Okay. While it not be, while it wasn't unanimously supported, it was the major.
It was on the first reading. You changed your mind after. Go ahead.
That was a draft only. One of the things that was presented to us was what to do with our first responders. The manager presented sixty-six million dollars in the restricted fund to be used for the building of a, um, police, fire, public safety building.
Commissioner Schwartz, the police station is not in front of us.
Sir, I would, I would appreciate if, if you would allow me, if you allow me to, to, uh...
Please stay to the, to the, to the stop, the topic that's in front of us, which is item seventeen.
City Manager, did I ask you a question about the sixty-six million restricted before this meeting? Did I ask you prior to tonight's meeting that the sixty-six million dollars was earmarked for public safety? Did I ask you that question?
Well, you're really taking it out of context because...
Did I ask you the question?
Let me finish, please. The sixty-six million was originally set aside in a restricted account. When the commission, uh, adopted a, uh, proposal to do, uh, parks, roads, uh, everything in the city, we included the sixty-six million in that project, which was totaled about two-hundred-and-ninety million, of which sixty-six of it originally had been in a restricted account. But all of that was combined and it included in that bond issue money set aside of about a hundred-and-ten million for a public safety building. So, uh, certainly sixty-six million will not build, um, a new public safety building.
Okay. And it was... And that's been said to you numerous times on the record.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Ed.
Can I have the floor?
Okay.
Thank you. City Manager?
Stick to the, to the end.
And following up, and following up with that response, City Manager, you had indicated that it was your sense at the August twenty-sixth workshop, because we cannot vote in a workshop. It was your feeling that there was majority support to dip into the restricted fund in order to move some of these projects forward in design phase.
Mr. Dodge?
Am, am I getting that right?
No. What it was, was a discussion by the City Commission. It was the City Commission's determination that we would begin these proj, projects utilizing the cash that we had. And we presented a plan to you, and it's on the agenda this evening, which is, uh, projects that were defined as year one, which was both for parks and recreation and roads. And we, we itemized those for you, and they are itemized in the backup of this agenda. Then there were dollars set aside for capital for construction for both year two and three that incorporated, uh, all of those funds, uh, to, uh, build roadways and to complete the parks. Uh, the year one, for example, um, I believe the vice mayor mentioned it in his conversation. We had set aside two-hundred thousand, both for Chapel Trail Soccer Park and West Pine Soccer Park for year one. For year two, we had set aside, and that was for artificial turf fields. For year two, we had set aside two-point-four million for each one of those parks to actually construct it because the, the first year for these projects, we do need to do design work, and that takes time. And then we bid it, and that's why it was designed this way. Uh, various playgrounds is a little bit different because we are buying equipment and replacing old, uh, playgrounds throughout the entire city. And those are all dollars that would be to redo those playgrounds. Uh, we, uh, talked about, uh, walkway paths at, uh, the Ben Ferrandino Park, uh, renovation of the Rose Price Park. Those dollars are, uh, are also for design. So, uh, you really can't split it and say the sixty-six million was intended for something. That changed after that bond issue, uh, failed.
Commissioner?
Yes, it, it did change after the bond issue failed. But what we haven't done is our due diligence in serving those who participated in that election.
For what purpose?
Allow me, Mr. Dodge. We, as a collective whole, presented to Commissioner Rodriguez's point, forty, forty, uh, education events on what the bond initiative was to include based upon a survey that was presented, uh, to the public by Mayor Castillo. What we haven't done is survey those who participated in that March election and ask them, to Commissioner Good's point, what part of bifurcation could you support? Now, we also discussed at the workshop about going out in November of twenty-sixth potentially to ask the voters for a public safety geo-bond initiative. So if we start taking money down in what's already presumed to be in a restricted fund, and if the voters... and if the voters... Do not support, do not...
Commissioner, there is no restricted fund.
Do not support...
There is no restricted fund.
There's sixty-six...
The sixty-six million is not a restricted fund. It's in, it's in general fund reserves. It is not a restricted fund.
That initially was restricted, but now, now it doesn't sound like it is.
It is not a restricted fund.
Okay, so it's not a restricted fund, but sixty-six million that we're gonna start drawing down from as an investment into our community.
That's correct, that's what the money's for.
So... Commissioner Good raises some, uh, points that I share with him with respect to capital improvement throughout our entire community. There, there is a need...
Are you speaking to the motion now, or to the amendment?
Well, I would, well, am I speaking to the motion now? You gave me, you gave me the latitude to speak to all of it.
Okay, so, go ahead.
We have a community that is in desperate need of fields that they can play on. That is a fact. And it's because of a plethora of reasons, whether it be environmental or just a lack of care, that has put the field conditions in this state. And that is unacceptable. There hasn't been any accountability to those responsible of allowing them to get to that point to begin with.
It's called rain and mud.
And what we have... What, what we have, Mayor... We've been working with the Drainage District. We've tried, we've tried to fix the muck. We've tried to drain. You and I participated in those votes to redo the fields. I am not opposed to going out and design this, to, to fix that situation that's out west. The Everglades isn't, will not change. It rains, the Everglades has hydrosta, uh, hydrostatic pressure, and it floods. That's how nature works. We know that. Set aside one particular spot in our city, we have to take a look at all of it. Public safety, prioritizing projects to Commissioner Good's point, uh, asking for bifurcation. There's a reason why Commissioner Good is asking for that. So, I'm disappointed that we did not have an opportunity, Mr. Dodge, to drill down on this a second time.
This is the opportunity. The point was, we had a workshop, the items were brought up, you received the agenda about a week ago, and you had the opportunity then to come back and say, hey, this is the item I don't agree with, this is the line item I don't agree with, so this is the second opportunity.
Commissioner Rodriguez, I'm not gonna be lectured. I was elected, just like you. Please show me the same respect.
I am showing you the same respect, but this, you asked the question, where's the opportunity? This is the opportunity.
Let's, let's...
You did not, you did not raise that point when Commissioner Good said the same exact thing.
I'm gonna ask that we stop the discussion. I'm gonna take the blame for this, because in my effort to get these kids to go home, I didn't properly introduce the item. So, let me properly introduce the item, and then I'm gonna go, come back to you. We held a workshop some months ago, following the defeat of a bond issue, uh, which sought to seek public approval for the funding. We didn't, we didn't ask for the public's approval of the projects. We asked for public approval of the funding to take care of it. It's, it's fair to say that the public at this point does not want to be taxed more, even for many of the projects that were there that they support. What we asked staff to do was find us another way out of Dodge. No pun intended. And they, and Dodge came back. And here was the reasoning. We're gonna take the affordable housing strategy and we're going to work at it in a different way. We're gonna take the economic development component, and we're gonna work it in the same way. What's left? Some drainage, some parks, some road projects, and a police station. As to the police station, which was mentioned, that is not part of this agenda, but because it's mentioned, I'm gonna let, I'm, I'm gonna... This commission sent the, the administration in a direction. They are going to put the police station out to bid. Those bids will not come back until April or May of next year. Whatever those numbers come back at, we do not have the money to build them. That is tomorrow's problem. Today's problem is what we discussed at a meeting just a couple of weeks ago, at a workshop. As Commissioner Good says, we were there all day, and we went through each and every one of these items. And at that workshop, though we don't vote, there was general, yeah, this kinda makes sense. Now, this is gonna, this, this plan has to happen in iterations, in steps. I don't think there's any member of this commission that would tolerate any community being excluded from improvements that they need. But these projects require design right now. They require design right now if we want to advance them down the road. They require design. The roads have to be designed. The, the, um, because there, there are no new roads anywhere but at those locations. The, 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 the parks improvements have to be designed. And there are some that are ready to come off the shelf. If there's, if there's, uh, authorization to spend on those projects, they go out, they buy the new equipment, you get a brand-new park. Okay? That's what this item is. There's nothing that's a surprise on this item. Okay? It has been brought back for us to vote on it. There has, it was moved and seconded. There is now an amendment before us, and it was offered before everyone got a chance to speak. And that's why I've given Commissioner, uh, uh, Schwartz some leeway in terms of dealing with both, because the motion was made before he got a chance to speak. But the motion that has, the amendment that has been made is to bifurcate roads and to bifurcate the, uh, the parks. Now, we have a Monday night memo. And in that Monday night memo, you're supposed to write down what the questions that you have. There were no questions asked about this item. So, I'm kinda surprised that we're having this discussion tonight. Are we entitled to do it anyway? Yeah, we are. But then, I think we have to be mindful of our time, because this is the only month that we have, and these kids have to go to school, and we have work to do. So, Commissioner, I'm gonna ask you to wrap up your comments. Uh, I know that there are other comments on the days, and then we need to go, get to voting on the, on the amendment or, and/or the, the regular item. So, please. Commissioner Schwartz? I'm re, I'm re... Everyone understand the item now? Okay. Commissioner Schwartz?
The administration, um, during our budget hearings, was, the commission did not ask any questions about the budget either, Mayor.
Commissioner, please stick, please stick to the, uh, item.
I asked seventy-four of them.
Or I'm gonna have to move on. This is the third time I'm asking you. Please stick to the item. We don't have a lot of time tonight. We have a long agenda.
Call the question.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on, uh, on this item? Okay, we're gonna take the, uh, amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment of bifurcation, say aye.
Aye.
No, no. That's why I love living in Pembroke Pines. And we do all get a vote, but not on this one. Okay. Mr., Mr., Mr. City Clerk, would you please call the roll on the amendment?
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes. Okay. So, first, we're gonna deal with the parks. Is there a motion to move the parks portion of the item?
I will move.
Oh, well, you go. Commissioner Rodriguez moves in the Vice Mayor's seconds.
Seconds, yeah.
Any discussion on the parks portion of the agenda?
Yes.
Go right ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
Some of the design work in some of the parks, some of these parks have been redone recently.
Which ones?
District two. I know intimately. Before we, before, I have a question for the manager.
Okay.
The, um...
Which, which, which parks in District two?
Mayor, I have a question for the manager.
Which parks in District two? You said, you said that there are parks that were, that were already done. Which parks?
Johnson Street.
Johnson Street?
That's not on the list.
That's not on the list.
Pembroke Lakes.
Pembroke Lakes? The golf course?
No.
Which, is that on the list?
Are you referring to Flamingo Park?
Yeah, yeah.
You're talking about the kiddie parks?
Mm-hmm.
It's just playgrounds.
I know what it is. I, I, I know what it is. And, look. Whatever is going on here, I have a job to do to ask questions.
We're trying to follow you. Which parks are you talking about?
I have a question for the manager.
Go right ahead.
The design phase, are you looking at having to go out for one firm to do everything on the list? Are you going to give us an opportunity as district commissioners to weigh in on what our constituents have been asking for as a part of that design phase? Because part of the master, parks, master plan, this is for Ms. Golding, there are things at Pasadena Park that the residents don't want. And there's two-hundred thousand dollars tagged in it. So, my question is, if I support this, even though my residents don't support it, I have to...
I'll, I'll help you, Commissioner. If you don't want the money, send it to District four or District three. Absolutely.
No, sir. No, 'cause, no.
I'll take it.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, this isn't a road show. I specifically said in the workshop, spit, while, while, I know you stepped out a few times, you may not have heard me, okay? That there are projects within this district, in District two, that do not meet up with the master plan. My question is, if we go out and do design work, are we gonna be providing the residents what they're asking for, or things that you would like to see, Vice Mayor?
I just would like to put on the record that, um, the Monday night memo, you could have asked those questions. You could have asked all those questions. Plus, I know that Assistant Manager Sorenson, Manager Dodge, they all have cell phones. They answer my calls too, I'm sure they answer yours.
And the manager answered mine, so, so before, before you lecture, before you lecture me, sir.
No, no one's lecturing you.
No one's lecturing you.
No one's lecturing you. Please be a good example for the kids. I mean, seriously.
Let's, let's, let's stop this, please. Let's stop this. Ask your question.
My question to the manager is, either one of you, conceptually, we've had Sanalovsky do a lot of design work for us under one package.
Mm-hmm.
Is it, is it your vision to have multiple parks being done by multiple firms? Or you're gonna bring this under one, one, one group? Because we have soccer parks that need to be fixed. Okay, that may be a specialized firm that does that, because there's environmental involved. Like, what is, what is your concept?
Can you answer the Commissioner's question?
Yes, I can. We're, we're going out for proposals, and there could be multiple, uh, companies that will submit proposals to do the design work. We never choose one, uh, firm to do everything. Sometimes, uh, when they review it, some get multiple, uh, projects. But, uh, for example, Chapel Trail Soccer Park, it's, it's doing the design for artificial turf. There's nothing else to that but that. West Pines is the same. Uh, Pines Recreation, North Parking Lot renovation.
What, what's the scope for...
That's, that's one item, so I don't...
He's asking the scope for Pasadena. What's the scope for Pasadena?
Pasadena's not on year one.
Pasadena's not on this list.
That's something that is gonna, on the list for year two, so it's not on consideration.
So, it's not on the list now, Commissioner?
But I'm looking at year two and three, it's in the presentation. But anyway, listen.
The what?
Are you looking at making a library that we can choose from? Is that, is that, is that the goal, kinda like a fence contractor?
No, no, it'll be, we'll go out for a proposal, we'll get applicants, and you have an opportunity to review them and vote on it, like you normally do.
So, so those items are gonna, if, for example, um...
They will come back to you, yes, sir.
Thank you, that's all I'm looking for, because, because I wanna make sure that the folks who are here tonight have that opportunity to weigh in, because we go to them, not the other way around.
Okay. All right. Anyone else on, uh, on the amendment? Okay. All those in favor of the amendment, uh, that's, that's the parks portion of the amendment. Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Show passes unanimously. We're on our way. Now, we're gonna have a discussion on roads. You're all welcome to stay, but if you need... The commission will recess for five minutes.
Mayor. Mayor.
My pleasure.
I'm sorry for the, for the delay. This was unexpected. All right. Yeah. No, we're good. We're good. I'll, I'll call it. Okay. Thank you. All right. All right, let's go, come on. Okay. Now, we can pick up our discussion on roads. Commissioner Good, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, again, you know, these projects here, for, I, I guess one of the things that I was, uh, I was thoughtful about too was, I didn't know, I didn't think that we were gonna have to use any of our funding, 'cause I thought we were gonna leverage the, um, the, uh, these road projects with the surtaxes.
Commissioner Dodge, uh, no, City Manager Dodge? Oh. Okay. Hold on. Let's hold on. I'll get you an answer to that. Let's wait for the manager.
And while we're waiting on that, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just add, you know, some of the other things too, 'cause, um, Commissioner Rodriguez, you know, also pointed out too that some of these projects that are identified around the school safety, traffic calming and things like that, we're not certain whether some of these schools are even going to be in existing. So, why even, why even, you know, I don't, we need to be thoughtful.
So, what's before us is a project plan. Obviously, we're not going to install, uh, school zones at a location that, where school is not gonna be there. This is, this is our plan. Plans can be amended, plans can be changed, but, you know, we have to, we have to make a start. Otherwise, there'll never be a finish. And the effort here is to move the needs of the people. These projects were identified by the Police Department as needing, uh, this safety amenity. They put it in there. I think that the smartest thing that we can do, because we don't know what the School Board will do, is just approve them, and certainly, if any of them fall out, they're not going to be, uh, installed, so...
And, Mr. Mayor, and, and I, I thank you for that. I, I can only tell you again, uh, sometimes unless it's, it's in writing somewhere, you know, it doesn't materialize.
We can, we can include that as, as direction to the manager, if you wish.
Well, I, I'd rather do... Well, I, I'd rather do that as a workshop, where we would have an opportunity to have this conversation in detail about what could be added to the list. Because I'm, I can't, like I say, I, there is not one item on this roadway infrastructure improvement that addresses district one in any way. And I, I would be, uh, derelict in my duty to my constituency to move, to approve something that doesn't give them any benefit. And there are needs. I mean, I have, we have a charter school. It's called Charter School East. And they're right there on Pembroke Road. And when they are, uh, doing their school, uh, drop off, pickups and things like that, they, they clog up Pembroke Road, no different than what they do with some of the other schools that are listed here. But yet it has never been contemplated. And there's something there that I would like to have conversation with you all about being able to spend money in regards to maybe putting in a stacking lien, if anything, to get the road, the cars off the road, so that, you know, Pembroke Road can be, uh, free flowing. And then I have other schools that are, uh, deeper within my district that I have nothing but constant complaints from the community about how they're tearing up their yards because they happen to be right in, 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 in a residential community. And I have to constantly work through a lot of issues with, um, you know, with code staff and whatever, because people don't, they, they literally drive on the yards of people that are within these school zones. And trying to keep those cars off, uh, some of the residents try doing things and they find themselves in very difficult place with maybe codes or something like that.
So one of the things that we could do, Commissioner, if you wish, is you can, you can move to defer the, um, the traffic component of this, of this item, to appear on a commission meeting, uh, at the next commission meeting. We can have the workshop just before the commission meeting. And then entertain the item at the next meeting, if you wish. That can be arranged. It would require a second and, and a majority vote, but that is certainly an option that's available to you.
Mr. Manager, can we ask that question now that he's back here for a moment? When we had our, uh, when this was being presented to us, these road and infrastructure projects were presented to us as not having a need to spend any, any, any real money because of the fact that, uh, there was going to be leverage by Surtax. So what can, is, has that changed?
Well, it, it has, and yet we do not have final answer. We had discussed the issue of leveraging the Surtax dollars in, um, borrowing money to do these roads. Uh, we have not, and I can refer, defer to the city attorney, received a definitive answer yet as to whether we can do that or not. It's our understanding that we, uh, may not be able to. However, there were dollars that we did set aside as part of the, uh, first phase of which we were doing improvements, uh, at school zones and traffic zones and everything else that was using not only, um, the Surtax dollars. We are also looking at the possibility of the gas tax dollars. If there's some way we can leverage that. But that's a question that Sam has had some discussions with bond counsel as to whether or not, uh, that is, if we're able to do that. Maybe, uh, Sam can address that.
Mayor, with your permission, just briefly?
Yes, go right ahead.
During the course of the conversation that Mr. Dodge refers to and that the commission raised, uh, concerns about, we, uh, consulted with the deputy county attorney, who handles issues of Surtax. We raised the issue with him regarding the city's bondability or the securitization of Surtax dollars for us here to actually use that source as a, uh, as a bootstrap or as a security tool for financing. Uh, he raised concerns about the bondability of it. Uh, we've had a brief conversation with the manager. I know that the finance director, our assistant city manager, Lisa Chung, has consulted also with Ford and Azos. He gets to look at the, the potential securitization and bonding ability of that. And it's still not very clear to us, but there seems to be some concern raised about whether or not, long term, um, that a, a, a bond transaction could be based upon Surtax dollars. Given the fact that it's, I'm, I'm going to use a word that may not be totally appropriate, but I think it's, it's consistent with what I understand it to be. It's kind of like a moving target in the context of the county's commitment going forward on a consistent basis that would then cause there to be some concern in the bond market to bonding that going forward in the future without some other security. That seems to be the general understanding that I have at the moment. Lisa may be able to hand, hand, answer differently. But that's my general understanding of what the challenge is with regard to the Surtax, um, dollars being available to bond for us.
Can I interject some information that I recently got from the county as well? Okay. So I've spoken to four county commissioners about this. And I've told them, your staff is telling us that they are unsure whether the Surtax dollars that they are now going to give to the city, the cities, uh, uh, can be used for capital projects. And this, right?
Yes, sir.
And this took me by alarmed surprise. Because, well, that's what the Surtax is for. That's why we voted for it. That's why we're taxing for it. Indeed, as you know, we have a project that is Surtax funded on Pembroke Road, out to US 27, uh, which is still on schedule. Where's the billboard?
I think it fell off.
It fell off? Let's put it back up, because, is it, it's there? Okay. So, so it didn't, it didn't make sense to me. Now, I can understand from their perspective that they say, well, what if your, what if your, um, debt service is greater than the apportioned share that, that, that you'd earn under the formulary for, for distribution? We're at risk.
Absolutely.
Okay. But we knew that. And there are dollars that are available in road and bridge to make that difference. There are dollars that are available elsewhere to make that difference. We would be very careful in calculating how much of, of that would be coming. That's the way that, that's the way that works. However, to say that those dollars could only be used for, for what, road maintenance? If, I mean, if you can't do capital proj, there's only two types of road projects.
Repair and maintenance.
Okay, so it's repair, maintenance, or it's capital. And to say that it can't be used. So I spoke to four different county commissioners about this very item. And they, and they, all four told me, I haven't spoken to five of them yet. I haven't spoken to all nine of them yet. But I spoke to, I got ahold of four of them. And they said, what? That makes no sense. I said, that's right. So this is brewing, and it's going to brew more. I'm going to see all nine of the county commissioners and talk to them about this. And hopefully, there'll be an item to, to square it away. At the end of the day, they shouldn't care so long as we deliver to them projects that they can approve of under, under the bond issue. They really shouldn't care which projects we pick. That was the whole point of giving the money to the cities. So I think that this will wrap itself up over time. But whether it's a program of citywide interest or of district interest or, uh, what array of projects we bring forward or whether it's nine million or 12 million or six million that we put on the street initially in phase one, those are valid questions to ask that should be worked shot. And if any one of you feel that, you know, a, a, a pressing, quote unquote, year-wannable kind of, kind of project should be in that year-one pre, package, that's, that's a fair point. I think that if all of you sort of feel that way, the thing to do is to move to defer to the next meeting. We will have a workshop before that meeting. You all, as district commissioners, should come forward and, and speak to the manager about which projects you want to see included. And let's have that workshop. Let's see how that looks. And then we'll vote on it in, in, in November. I think that that's, that's, that's the way to do it. Because we're not going to resolve it today.
No, and, and Mr. Mayor, I, I would be supportive. I'm gonna wait for you to make the motion or whatever it may be.
I don't make motions.
No, 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 I'm talking about Commissioner. You're in my line of sight.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. So to Commissioner Good, I, I respect exactly what you're saying. I understand we have to look out for our districts. So I'm happy to second whatever your motion is. I was looking at my district, obviously. But I, I did not know that some of yours weren't included. So I'm with you. Just whatever your motion, I'll second it. And, and look forward to whether it's a workshop, whether it's the next commission meeting, whenever it is that you bring it forward, I'll, I'll be supportive.
And that's time certain at the next meeting. And Commissioner Schwartz, I should say to you, if you have specific parks projects in your district that you want revisited, please share that with the manager and let's include that in the workshop. We don't want, there's no point. There's no effort here. There's no design to shortchange anyone's particular districts. It's simply that we have to make a start. And if, if, if we want staff to be responsive to what we, what we need from them, this is not the place to say they're not responsive. We have to do the work behind the scenes so that they produce something that, that is in the zone of possible agreement. And, and, and it's very important to me that we try to proceed with this unanimously. All of these projects have been, have been defined, not just, uh, on, on the traffic side, not just in our strategic plan, but each and every single one of them came out of the traffic master plan. Correct, Mr. Manager?
That is correct.
Okay. So we've been looking at these projects for years. Two of us have it. But we've been looking, as a commission, we've been looking at these projects for years. So let's, let's, let's see if we can't get to a place where we're all comfortable. And hopefully, that'll be in our meeting in November. So, so motion?
Sorry, and I think that gives us enough time to also see the redefining, which is what I had, that's why I supported the bifurcation, because that's the part of the argument.
When, when was that supposed to come, Commissioner?
Well taken.
Uh, it should be not this coming Tuesday as a workshop.
But in October.
Yeah.
Yes, that gives us more, yeah.
We would have a little bit more of an idea, because they can always do the same thing that we're doing and moving forward. And not, and not making final decisions, but we'll have a better idea because they've shunk down the list.
But bear in mind, next year, they might close schools too. And the year after that, they might...
I mean, I hope that that's not the goal, but...
Right, but I mean, so, so, but, but meantime, meantime, these schools need a, a, the, the, the police is saying they need a, a safety amenity. So there's only so much we can, we can do around, uh, unimponderable.
In, in regards to the workshop, can we, um, go through the list that they, uh, downsized to? Because they had the big list. Now they have a, a shortlist. Can we just flag the ones that would be on that shortlist?
We can.
Broward County Public Schools.
Yes, the schools.
And if I may ask, I also would like to request that we would also, as the mayor said, you know, have an opportunity to discuss with the city manager projects that might not be on the list, because somebody's, again, the bigger master list still doesn't have anything in district one hardly.
Okay. But, but let's remember, this is phase one of a phased deal. And the goal is, let's make a start so that we can get to other phases in the projects and, and, and complete the, uh, the strategic plan that we worked so hard to, to create.
So motion to defer till our next, uh, meeting, uh, for a workshop prior to the meeting.
Okay. Time certain. And that's time certain. Mr. Manager, you're clear?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Any discussion on, on the, on the motion to defer? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. We are done with the consent agenda. Now we are on, uh, first reading ordinances, item 20, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission. Number 20 is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number 2025-15 on first reading. It is a proposed ordinance, uh, of the city commission, the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending ordinance number 2028, providing for amended budget for fiscal year 2425 for the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, providing for conflict severability, providing for effective date. Item 20 on the floor for consideration, Mayor.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Good, seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Any from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
For the recital, Mayor and Commission, the second and final public hearing will be on November the 19th in these very chambers as a public hearing as well for a consideration by the mayor and commission.
I think we should go back to the auditors now.
Can we get our auditors?
Okay. Okay. So come on back.
Thank you, Mayor.
I hope you guys don't have Brightline back up.
So we, so we were talking about, we were talking about Waste Pro.
Uh, no, we're done with that one. We moved on to the last one.
So what's next? You have a third one?
The third one, which is the...
Is that your last?
That's the last one.
Go right ahead.
All right. So this is the risk assessment. So what we did was, let me go to that slide. There we go. So in phase one of our risk assessment, we gather information, where we conduct surveys and interviews. As you all know, we interview you all. Um, leadership, functional areas and select stakeholders. We acknowledge key initiatives and how most risks are discussed, potentially impact, um, the risk profile for the city.
Can we have the auditor's, uh, item on the, uh, on the screen, please? Number three? Go right ahead.
There we go. Thank you. Then phase two, so we evaluate the risks. We prioritize the areas of concerns based on the risk to business performance, potential impact to the organization and the likelihood, uh, of those risk events. We consider the maturity, uh, of the governance structure, uh, control environment and business processes, uh, monitoring controls and feedback mechanisms. And then phase three, we draft the internal audit plan, which is what we're gonna present tonight. Proposed internal audit projects based on the evaluation of the organizational risk universe. The plan contains a mixture of high and medium risks, medium related, uh, rated risk areas. And we propose projects that should be evaluated during the year for continued relevance and timing. So this is the proposed internal audit plan for the fiscal year 2026. The procurement, uh, rate rolls to the top, uh, process. So with that, we wanted to review the city's purchasing and RFP process to ensure fair and competitive bidding. Um, with that, that is, uh, 250 hours for that one, for that particular project. Uh, fleet management controls, um, the objective of that would be assess city, uh, controls over the city vehicles, use and maintenance, including fleet, fleet utilization, tracking and oversight. Uh, that project is estimated at 200 hours. Uh, budget and funding management, uh, the objective of that one is to evaluate how the city is managing its budgetary constraints and external funding shortfalls. Focus on processes for prioritizing projects and controlling costs. Uh, we are suggesting 100 hours for that one. Um, permitting process efficiency.
Mm-hmm.
Examining the budget, the, uh, building permitting and inspection process for delays or compliance gaps. Um, we are estimating 300 hours for that one. Utility billing accuracy. Review the accuracy of water meter readings and billings. Assess controls to help prevent incorrect meter readings leading to inaccurate high water bills. And we are suggesting 200 hours for that. Remediation validation. This here is just to review the identified issues and control gaps within the city that we have previously identified and confirm that those corrective actions have been effectively implemented. And we are recommending eight hours for that. Special projects, these are projects that if you all have anything special you want us to look at, we are, uh, we are, uh, happy to look at those and we are estimating 120 hours for that. And then project management, this is for, so ten of these meetings, creating the, uh, reports and presentation, things of that nature for that. So this is the proposed plan. Um, you all can, uh, look at that and approve that. Or you can, we want to give you other options as well, because these, um, here, there we go. Uh, there, these are other audits, uh, for consideration as part of the plan. These also, uh, came up in our risk assessment. So, you know, I won't go through all of these, but if you see some on there that you think you want to put on the list for this year or save them for another time, so this is what we are proposing. Any questions on that?
Anyone have a question on, uh, on the item?
My, my only question would be, when is the drop dead date to amend this? Because, uh, as the year progresses, there may be adjustments that I'd like to see. Like when is a date that we would have to say, this is the final plan? This is the number of hours? These are the areas you're going to evaluate?
Well, uh, the way that we want to present to you all, you can have a menu of all of these. So you can approve something today and then you can amend it whenever you want to. So if you see, sorry, I'm keeping this, keep hitting this thing.
You're a little tall, yeah.
If you want to, uh, like, approve this plan and then you want to add something to it, you are more than happy to do that, but it's up to you all on how you want to do it.
So, so they're giving us 120, these, these special projects have not been identified with 120 hours.
That's true. That's true.
Let's say, let's say that we had a yen to take a look at a particular area, that would be inserted there. Alternatively, if we didn't have it, they wouldn't spend that hundred and twenty hours. So that's the way the audit plan works. So we have the luxury of a hundred and twenty of their hours to spend or not to spend. They're giving us the total cost, assuming they spend a hundred and twenty hours, but that if if that came, if that came off the top, what's your, what's your, what's your number?
If we took.
If you took a hundred and twenty hours off.
Yeah, so that'd be what? Twelve, let me make sure I do my math right.
Twelve ten.
Yeah, I think it's twelve ten. Yep. So if we take those off, it'd be twelve ten, and it'd be time the blended hourly rate.
What's what's the cost of twelve ten?
Let me give you a quick math right here.
Approximately two hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Two hundred and eighty-four thousand is within the range of what we have historically paid.
Yeah.
It's a little bit more, but it's it's certainly within the range.
And and Mayor, I just want to be clear, I'm not advocating for a reduction in auditing. I'm just saying, when I look at, for example, procurement process two hundred and fifty and fleet management controls two hundred, if Commissioner Good or anyone would say, you know what, I want three hundred for procurement instead of two fifty, I'm using an example, that's something that we could do by a specific date, or is it a living plan that can be adjusted as we move?
Absolutely, it can. This is just the plan. Projects roll in off depending on the year, depending on things that might come up in the year that we can't foresee. You are not set in stone to these projects for this plan if you approve it today.
Okay, those are my questions.
So, Mr. Mayor, so so piggybacking off of this conversation here, so we had earlier a conversation because the hours would be predicated on essentially what we're asking you to look at, right? So I mean, so we just now had a conversation about, you know, the Waste Pro, and you went through all the customer service stuff, and then, but that didn't address some of the issues that some of us have in regards to some of that billing process. And so we asked for another layer. So where does that fall into here in in regards to that? You know, how does that work? Because it's not in, it's not in.
Yeah, it's not in this particular.
I didn't see it in the the options either.
Yeah.
But 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 it, but you did hear at least two of us speak to the fact that we are a little concerned about that. So what's the process in order to to include that?
The process is what just happened, basically. There's a, there was a discussion, a concern came up, you'll reach out to your external auditors to see if there's a way that we could come up, one, we'll hear your concerns, then we'll develop a process and plan to to address those, and then come up with estimated hours and the scope of services, and then we would present it back to the commission to include on the on the on the fiscal year twenty-six plan.
I mean, could that be buried in the a hundred and twenty hours that's special projects?
It depends on the scope of of what you're looking at, because there could be more than a hundred and twenty hours, depending on what you're looking at, so.
Well, I think that maybe you have a conversation with all of us who want to have a conversation on this, and let us all independently speak to you so that you can put together a scope and bring back before us then.
That could work as well.
That work?
For me, it does. Okay. I already had that meeting with them. Didn't you guys call us for that?
Yeah, yeah, so as part of the the risk assessment, we talked to you all about your thoughts and things of that nature, and it is included.
So what are you suggesting there?
No, I think.
The internal audit of next year.
Oh, for next year?
Yeah, I think what he's, what he's saying is that for one of the other audits.
Go a little bit deeper than what you had shared with us. I mean, yeah, you guys did the customer service stuff great.
But?
But but it was the billing stuff, too, that we were having conversations with.
Okay.
Yeah.
So where's that slide with the bank of all, like, the projects?
Yeah, this one.
So the second slide was all the other projects that we populated and to incorporate that could be potentially done as of today, if the if the commission suggested it. We could add that layer, like, that project that you're asking about, we could come up with a scope of services, we could, we'll follow up with you, the commissioners that have concern, come up with a project, and then throw it on this kind of like unit, like, this database of projects that are ready to go, we've already scoped it out, we've identified that this project, and then it's kind of like a a database of projects that you could select from at any given year.
Alternatively, you could delegate it, perhaps the the manager wants staff to do it. I mean, they don't have to, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, but this, that's what auditors do.
No, I, I'm with.
Is they, is they hold staff accountable to what, that's what I'm looking at. I mean, if you're going to work with staff, no, I don't want you here anymore.
No, what I meant was with the Waste Pro.
Yeah, so, but that that was the thing here, was for them to at least be able to look into the billing component of this, so that's, and and I don't know, why could that not be a part of the water billing? Are they, aren't they, isn't that billing the same process?
For Waste Pro?
Yeah.
The billing for Waste is part of the, the billing for Waste is part of the utility.
Yeah, why can't it be built into there, too, then?
Into which, Commissioner?
Well, into, when you look at the, is this your original plan here?
The utility billing accuracy.
Yeah, utility billing accuracy. I mean, why can't it be utility billing?
No, this is for this upcoming year's plan.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, too.
Yeah.
And we would just increase the hours, like, we could do that.
We can include that in there.
This one was particularly looking at the water, part of it, but if you want to add.
But he's, but but the billing is 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 using the same system.
The residential billing for water includes the monthly bill for garbage, however, commercial is billed differently, and therefore, sometimes, commercial accounts people don't pay, and what happens is, we only reimburse Waste Pro when we receive the money. Because I think there was a comment made that sometimes there was a a delay in the vendor receiving their money. They get it the, every two weeks, whenever we receive it, but we're not going to give them money for a commercial account that we haven't been paid for.
Exactly. And something like that might be its own, I I would prefer it to be its own project, just speaking from another perspective.
So we, like, maybe you have a conversation with all of us and develop a scope. We'll do that, okay? Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to see a list of the projects in the last five years that you guys have already tackled. The, no, I understand. Okay, and let's just move the agenda, I'll have, I'll have the conversation tomorrow.
Anything else? Do we need a vote on this?
Mr. Mayor, if you will.
Yes.
If if the direction is to to approve the 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 plan as proposed, it includes your conversation and the consensus to essentially have some individual conversations and coordinate that with the auditors to get to a refined answer during the course of the the next fiscal year.
So do we have?
So moved, then.
All right, so it's moved by Commissioner Good, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? Any from the public? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Show passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And I thank you for your forbearance.
Thank you.
Okay. Item twenty-one.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Number twenty-one is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash sixteen on first reading, which is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter thirty-five of the city's code of ordinances, entitled Procurement Procedures, Public Funds, Providing for Comprehensive Revisions to the City's Procurement Procedures as detailed in Exhibit A attached here to incorporate hearing by reference, amending the procurement threshold requiring commission approval, providing for exemptions, providing for codification, providing for conflict severability, and providing for an effective date for the record, Mayor and Commission, number twenty-one on the floor.
This item was also workshopped. Is there, is there a motion to approve?
Motion made.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Rodriguez, is there a second?
I can second it for discussion, although.
Okay, okay.
There there are certain.
Things you want to ask?
Yes.
Okay, there's a second. Commissioner Rodriguez, did you have, you you made the motion, did you have any items?
On it, I would like to have, like, a deeper discussion as to some of the items in it. I agree with parts of it, I want to hear what my colleagues have to say, especially about the threshold. And but I I really, when we were having this discussion at the workshop, I know that I had initially agreed that maybe waiving of the, of the bidding coming to the city commission was what I, what my preference was at the moment, and then listening through that workshop further on the discussion, especially from comments from Commissioner Good, I I don't feel comfortable doing that at the moment, and I see that that is part of what it is on section thirteen point, sorry, thirty-five point one nine, where it does change it from sealed competitive solicitations as defined in thirty-five point eight shall be presented to the city commission, and it's changed to May. So it's up to the discretion of of the city manager that some of these bids come back, or some of the advertisement of these bids, or these bids themselves, before they be sent out for advertising, do not come back to us. And and after kind of ruminating a little bit more on the workshop, I don't agree that this should be a part of it, and I wanted to hear what else everybody's thoughts were on that and on the threshold as well.
Well, let's get administration's response to that first. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Gomes is coming forward to address those questions.
And then if I can have Mr. Gomes maybe explain, I appreciate the the question was answered in the Monday night memo, but if we can have a little bit of a deeper explanation for what the quick bid would be, just because I was a little bit confused on to kind of like the difference, if you can give background on that and then answer the questions as well.
Absolutely. Mark Gomes, Assistant City Manager. First of all, thank you for the question. In regards to waiving the requirement on advertisements, most cities don't have that requirement. As you know, on the August twenty-seventh workshop, I presented a list of other cities, and they do not require that. You, as a city commission, you do approve agenda items for approval, the award of those items. So making staff bring those items in front of you for advertisement makes us bring it one time, delays the process of doing that, then we have to go out to the bidding process. During that time, after advertising, we have to then review it again for putting it out to the public on the open gov website, then we're bringing it back to you for award. After you award it on that commission agenda item, then we have to then provide it to staff, staff is now going to upload it into the eprocurement, the Tyler Munus ERP system, and then we're reviewing it again. So that's at least four times on most typical projects. With that being said, some other projects come in front of the commission more than two times. For instance, tonight, we have an item on PFAS. So the design of that makes us bring it for, bring it in front of you first for advertisement, then we bring it again in front of you for recommendation of the evaluation committee's award of the project, and then we're going to bring it back again in front of you for the award of the negotiated agreement. So that time is spent focused on, you know, taking staff time on these smaller projects, especially, you know, under a hundred thousand dollars, where a city commission typically does not ask questions on it on the agenda, and you don't ask questions in the Monday night memo. For instance, I look back at in twenty twenty-four, all of the advertisements for solicitations and the award of those projects, and just for statistical purposes, in twenty twenty-four, we had eighteen agenda items for advertisements. Those eighteen agenda items included sixty-five solicitations for advertisement. Besides that, on awards, we also had approximately sixty-five agenda items for awards. With all those items in twenty twenty-four, those solicitations, city commission only asked questions or memo, or had an item on the Monday memo on two of those items. And the two questions were just general, one was asking about something that was already in the backup for the agenda item, and another one was just asking on a, whether the equipment's going to be used by a subcontractor or city staff. So that kind of addresses that, hopefully.
And and I guess to my colleagues and Commissioner Good, if you want to speak on it a little bit more, from my understanding, what we wanted, or what you talked about was, when we do see the FRQ or the FRP, is to be able to see, okay, like, is this the function that we want this vendor to serve in the future? I'm thinking about it in these larger, maybe not for a pump, or something that, to be honest, I I'm not intimately aware, you know, intimately knowledgeable on water and things like that, you might be. But to me, these larger contracts in which we are looking at changing some kind of concept for how that vendor interacts with our, with our, our residents and our clients, that to me is a lot of more importance, and maybe that just hasn't come up. But for, for example, I'm thinking of the building, the building department's upcoming conversation, and and then part of that, I would like to see how that FRQ or FRP comes up, because I don't necessarily know if I want it to function in the same way, and if we put out the same bit that we've done in the past, then we are, we're, I I can go on and check every single, every single day, and that can be part of the job, but I think it does give us an opportunity to highlight specifically what is what is coming up, because in in that, just as an example, I would like, you know, part of customer service or other aspects of that to be included in that, in in what is bid, or an explanation as as to like how that is selected. So I guess those are my thoughts, mostly on these bigger contracts, and maybe we can kind of find a middle ground as to an estimation as to what these contracts may be, and if it's like under a certain threshold, then it definitely doesn't have to be brought to us, but if it's something like our building department, or water, or anything like that in the future, that's where I don't necessarily want to delegate that to you all without doing the due diligence to check, like, to check it ourselves, because I do see on the advertisements, and I read the thing, and know I haven't had questions, but that doesn't mean I'm never going to have questions about it.
Absolutely, and just, just to follow up to that comment, as stated in the agenda item, it gives the city manager the discretion to bring those items in front of you, especially those ones with great public interest, and those complex contracts, like the function sourcing. For us, as, and just, just to clarify, for us as administration and the city manager, it does not make sense for us to go out to bid for a project that the city commission is not going to agree with. So if we spent that time going out to bid for it, now we bring you back to award the project, you're going to say, well, this is not what we're looking for, and now you're going to make us go back out to bid for it. So that wastes our time, so that's why it would be in the best interest of the city manager and administration to make sure those types of items get brought to you in advance, so you could provide them.
And I appreciate that, but with all due respect, sometimes, sometimes things are brought forth, thinking that we're going to be okay with it, and we're not. And so, like, so I want to find a policy and a straightforward line as to, you know, with the help of my colleagues, as to where that line is in the sand for us, because I I don't, all respect to Mr. Dodge, but sometimes there, you know, it might be up to his discretion, and he thinks of, you know, it going a different direction, and we are the elected body. So I I want to be able to hold on to a little bit of that decision-making, and maybe finding a threshold within that to kind of get a balance between those kind of smaller ticket items and something a little bit larger. And maybe that is within the scope of of that other threshold we're talking about, and it can be equal on both ends, but those are my two cents, and I wanted to to hear from what else everybody else had to say.
And I obviously would like to, wait, actually, you got a call on me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. And I'd like to hear particularly from Commissioner Good, and given his experience in in procurement areas at the municipal and county level, I am good with, and I said this at the workshop, I think the fact that the threshold has not changed in twenty-seven years, which I specifically asked, and you put it in the item, how long has it been? And then you went the extra mile of bolding it and underlining it. I mean, we got to adapt, it's been twenty-seven years. I'm not going to say it must be one hundred thousand, I'm open to whatever our colleagues up here are saying, or which direction the conversation goes, but for a city our size with the cost of goods and services today, twenty-five thousand is a Happy Meal at McDonald's. It's just not, i- it's not where it should be, in my opinion. Thank you for the quick quote, I, the secret's out, I guess, I'm the one who asked about the quick quote in the memo, because I did not know what that was. Thank you, sorry that it added twenty pages to the memo, but I wanted to see it, so I appreciate that. On the other items, I do want to, I, I'm, I'm in close agreement, I think I can land where Commissioner Rodriguez is trying to get. I I I really would like to just hear from my colleagues, but I did want to put on the record, twenty-seven years without changing the threshold, it's a give and take, yes, we are the elected body, yes, we have to serve as a check on the administration, but ultimately, I also know that twenty-five thousand's too low, and I think that needs to be addressed. I'd also, I I don't want to consistently go to workshopping, I understand that, I'm just putting out there on the record that should someone else want that, especially procurement is so complicated, we did communications, we did procurement, what else did we do that day?
Strategic plan.
Strategic plan. And I run a business, and I teach students at FIU, so I did get up like two or three times, students were at midterms, I was taking calls from students as well. So maybe if my colleagues were okay with it, a workshop but specific to this, and these proposals, I'm open to it, I'm not motioning for it, I want to hear what you all say. Commissioner Good?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues, appreciate your words, kind words, thank you. I, I, so I'll just start off with this piece about the, you know, removing us from having an opportunity to review solicitations before they go out, so, you know, it's, it's. So, you know, it's, it's, it's clear that us as commissioners, we do not get to participate in any of the evaluation or any of the recommendation for awards and things like that. So our only opportunity to participate in the process is on the very front end, and that's it.
Well, we vote on the contract too.
Well, but that has taken it way down the road, and it's a little bit too late.
It's also limited because we can, we, we're kind of bound to it being the, the least expensive, and there's a couple other things.
It'll come to us saying, here's the contract. If you don't get it, we're not going to get this service now. So it's, that's not fair either. So the point is, is that, you know, when, when we take away the opportunity review, we take away any opportunity for us to have input. Now, I will tell you, you know, you referenced all these other cities, so I'm going to respond to you and what I've found from my colleagues in other cities. They are so angry that they don't have that opportunity right now to participate in, in helping to define the solicitation itself. Not every solicitation is going to be something that we're all going to be looking at. You're right. There's a lot of them, we, we just, we just go, hey, okay, we're pretty comfortable, blah, blah, blah. But there are times that any one of us can say, hey, we think this solicitation needs to be a little different. So let me give you an example, because it happened here, and it was me, right? So we had a, a project, and it was like, hey, 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 we got to hurry up and get this out. It's called the Pines Village Water Main Replacement Project. And what happened was that came before us and everybody, you know, we got to get this out, we want to, you know, we got to do this project. And then it was like, can we pause and we add into the solicitation? Can we do sewer too? Because if we're going to rip up the roads for the water, why don't we do the sewer as well? And so the commission then all said, well, that's a good idea. Let's do that. So that was a time where we had an opportunity to participate in that solicitation. But, but that was, maybe that was something of what you would consider to be great public purpose, but maybe other people don't see that as a great public purpose. Because just as you spoke about the PFAS, you don't see that as a great public purpose because you said, we want you guys to just be moved out of the way because we got to hurry up and get this done. But that is a great public purpose, and we're not participating in that. So I see it as a great public purpose, but I'm not allowed to participate in that part of the solicitation. So I don't want to yield that opportunity to anybody else to tell me what I think is important or not. So I think it's very important that we don't lose the opportunity to review for the solicitations, to be thankful that we're not constantly, you know, going through it and making changes and things like that. But there are occasions, and we need to reserve that right. And so me, the recommendation for me, and matter of fact, I'm going to even make a motion, that we strike all the, all that language that says.
Let's, let's, let's wait until we all speak before motion.
All right, well, then when the time comes, Mr. Mayor, then I'll, I'll go ahead and make those comments. So, so that's, that's, that's speaking to that item. The other thing, so I have other things to speak about. So we talk about the quick quote. First, let me, let me make something clear. I am, I was dead set against going above 25,000. I, I don't have a problem with that now. I, I think going up to 100,000 is fine, you know? I still think though that we need to maintain processes though. You know, the city manager can have up to 100, but I think there's some processes that need to be held intact in that. So we talk about the quick quote, and so, yeah, that's really nice, quick and convenient to go up to 100. But there's a reason why we go out to bid for things over, over 25,000. And part of that is when you put a bid together, you have terms and conditions that become a part of the contract. And so whenever we don't do a bid, we're not putting in certain terms in contract. Now, I looked at what you provided in the Monday night memo, and I saw that there was a, a, a summary of, of a contract term. But typically, when you look at our bids, that's just a small part of the entire bid. Because you got the front end, you got the back end, you got the middle, you got all that stuff. So for me, I think we're losing on our ability to maintain, you know, terms and conditions that we would otherwise not be able to do in a quick quote format for ease of convenience.
If, if I could respond to that, just, just for clarification, the quick quote that you saw was for a specific product. Different types of quick quotes could include agreements. So if we're buying computer equipment and things like that, we're not going to include a contract because we're generally just including the PO terms and conditions. We're receiving those goods, you know, we're giving it to the department, whether those are laptops and things like that. But yes, definitely, if we're going out for a quick quote for janitorial services, one of the attachments to that item would include an agreement. The same, similar type of agreement that you'd see for an RFP, IFB, and things like that.
I, 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 I need to see more than, I'm not going to be in the way. Vice Mayor, I'm really not interested in doing any more workshop on this particular item, and I'm making my comments, and, you know, we can.
Hey, that's why I threw it out there. I didn't motion it.
No, I'm, I'm sharing with you things that I can agree to and things that I can't. So when, when we look at, so I read the right, you know, the narrative on what, what you're trying to do, but really, it's really about reading the, how, how the language is going to change in the procurement code. And so when I, when I, the rest of my comments are going to be made referencing to that. So we are, the exhibit doesn't have page numbers actually, so, yeah, I'm going to have to make reference to going back to finding section 18, 18, 7, P and Q. I, I guess these are just things that we're adding in, but who's, who's the designate? One of the things that I have a problem with, it says city manager or his or her designate. And there's no definition of what is his or her designate. I mean, I, I don't think city manager would ever do this, but it could be a secretary one is a designate, given the authority to do something. And me, I wouldn't feel comfortable if the city manager's giving his authority away, that he would also, you know, then give it to a, someone who's not an executive, I would guess. So I, I have, I just have issues with anything that's referencing designate, and particularly when we talk about, again, going to this. Let me see here. What is that? 18, 8, best interests of the city. It, it speaks about the city administration or the city commission shall make specific factual findings supports determination, and such contracts may be placed on the city commission consent agenda. So if we're doing the best interest of the city, you know, I don't, I don't agree that it should go on a consent agenda. I think it should be a regular agenda item. And this adding city administration or the city commission, I guess to the attorney, if city administration makes the factual finding, does the city commission still need to make that factual finding in order to make that approval? Or, or is the city exempt from any consequence that may be from a factual finding and it may not be factual or true?
May I respond, Mayor?
Yeah.
Under the current provisions of the current procurement code, you have, over a period of time have raised this issue, and correctly so. Under the current code, it does require the commission make a factual finding to actually exempt the process, to get to an exemption process. If the, if the language here is not sufficient to do this, the intention, and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the answer is that the vesting of the factual finding is, would be reversed and placed in the hands of the manager. Is that not correct, Mark? That was, that was the global intention.
So, yes, just to clarify, in previous meetings, we've talked about best interests of the city, and you've mentioned that maybe some concerns about the city commission finding those factual findings where administrations are actually drafting the agenda and stating some factual findings. That's why this adjustment is here to address those concerns.
Well, I understand that, but that's not my question. My question is accountability to the factual findings, and who's going to be held accountable to a factual finding that may be found to be misrepresented or not, not factual, or some other thing could be wrong with it, which is something that we're seeing nowadays. And I just need to know, is that going to be the commission who will be responsible for that? Or is that the administration that's going to be responsible now that this language is being added? Because I don't mind administration be there. I just don't want to be held accountable to a statement that I, I didn't find factual finding.
Yeah, I, I don't see an issue with that.
To the attorney, I know, I know you're looking for stuff here, but this is a very important issue here.
If the objective.
It may sound easy, but I'm talking, this is accountability issue.
I understand. As, as you're a lawyer, I understand that, and, and I know that this has been a source of discussion for a number of years on this dais with regard to having to make that decision. It, it is an exemption from, from, from bidding. I mean, it, it is a serious decision you're making. I, I don't, I don't minimize the impact, both operationally and legally, for you to use that exemption to get to the answer. Because there are other premises on which you could travel to get to the answer, which are, which are not exemptions, you know, go to bid. If the intention of the commission with this language and, and proposal is to essentially remove the factual finding decision from the commission to the manager, then that needs to be, if it's not clear enough, we could make it more clear. But that would divest you of that, of that, of that fact-finding mission. Which I, I know, Commissioner, and I say this with great respect, you, you've asked for those facts in public. It's, it's, you have a history of that, which is, show me the facts that would support this exemption. And, and if there has been a lack of facts or a lack of demonstrable facts, you've had different opinions about that because each, each, each matter is separately considered by you.
How do we identify, because what you set as fact, let's say erroneously, comes out as not necessarily being factual, and we select a vendor, and then the vendor comes backs and tries to sue us for not selecting them or does a protest or whatever because they said that's not factual. Like, who gets in trouble there? Is it administration who put the fact in or us that we agreed to that being a fact? That, I guess that's, that's the question, and I don't know if I, if I understood any answer to that.
If I can respond briefly, the, irrespective of the manager or the assistant city manager or the procurement director, the ultimate party responsible, should there be a challenge, is the, is the city as a whole, which means the commission. You're, you are certainly opening, the door is open for that purpose, and the city is eminently sueable. That's, that's how people act. If they don't get what they want, if the bidding, if the protest process doesn't result in a conclusion which that proposer, that vendor thinks is equitable for him or her, then their remedy is to sue the city. They don't sue the manager. They don't sue the, the director of the procurement. They sue the city member of Pines. And then the best answer is, is was there a legal premise, a legal basis on which the commission made a decision? Because ultimately, the, the commission makes that decision.
We have to move this along.
And who gets removed?
Removed?
Us?
From?
From what?
For what?
If something is found to be wrong.
I, I would, I would, I, I would, if I may, Mayor, to the, to the entire commission. I mean, that, to suggest.
What happens if, what happens if, if you just take, strike city commission, just not even have city commission be held accountable to a factual finding?
All right, let, you know, we have to come in, we have to come in for landing. We've got, do you have any other questions? We have another commissioner that has to speak, and we got to bring this in.
So, yeah, just a scribbler error thing for you all. You know, I guess this is again 18, 9, where you speak to any, yeah. This is, you say that any liability claim up to 100,000 can be approved with combined approval of the city manager, city attorney, city manager without the city commission approval. All liability claims in excess of 50,000 shall require the city commission approval. Why would it be 50,000 for the commission approval if you can approve up to 100,000? So I don't know if that's an error, but then again, it's like an increase of, you're, you're going up to 100. I, I really don't care about that, but is, is it, is it $100,000 before the city commission gets approval, or is it 50?
Yeah, that's, as you mentioned, it's a scribblers error. That should have been changed, the 50 should have been changed to 100.
All right. So. So again, this is, I guess, tied to your quote thing. This is 3.25 open market procedure. It references purchases of an estimated cost greater than 25 but less than or equal to 100 shall be procured through the E platform. I guess that's your quote.
That's the quick quote.
Yeah, I, I still think that anything over 25 should be through a bid process, so in that section there. And then on 3, 35.28 change orders, two. This is a change order where the total cost of the purchase does not exceed 100,000. I think, is that in conflict with 35.28B? Where it says, commission approval for all sums over 25,000. I mean, is that, is that an error?
No. So the, the first one is a change order where the initial purchase, so that's a, that's an item that does not necessarily go in front of the city commission. So if there's a, if there's a $99,000 initial purchase, and there was a change order up to $1,000, that would take it to 100,000. That would not need to go to commission. But if it was $2,000, now that's going over that $100,000 threshold. Similarly, if a, a change order in general hits the $25,000 limit, then it'd have to go in front of the city commission as well.
And the section 35.34, promoting business within the city, no expenditure of public funds. So we're taking away the approval of the city commission for that and giving it to the city manager. So it basically means that the city manager is the only one who can authorize entering into a mutually beneficial arrangement with a private business entity for the specific benefit of the citizens and residents of the city. I am not willing to give that write-up.
And just to clarify, that's for items that have zero expenditure.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter. It's, it's.
Let, let him answer. It's important to get that on the record.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, just to clarify, that's for items that are $0. So there's some questions that have come up in the past of, well, if.
What do you mean $0?
There's no expenditure of city funds, so if there's an agreement.
So why is there a contract without city funds?
So there's a, one item that a legal brought up to me recently was a program in regards to, I believe it's Red Cross, that they would provide certain services to the city for training fire department staff. There's no cost to it. They're providing us with that information, and we can use it in training for staff, but there's no cost.
Why is the contract necessary for that?
I, I believe the, the, the fire department needs that for, to provide services to their staff, but.
Why? Mr. City Attorney, why?
Well, first of all, without the benefit of a contract, there's a liability issue that's not otherwise articulated in the.
Why can't it be done by MOU?
Well, an MOU still reflects the, the commitment of both sides.
But MOUs don't come here.
That's hypothetically true, depending upon their value.
So why does it have to be a contract?
And just to clarify, the language in the section.
Department heads do MOUs all the time.
Limitedly, Mayor.
Why are we doing this?
Would there be, is one of the examples, the agreement that we had between the school and our charters and the city, where the schools could use our facilities and we could use their facilities? And I don't believe that that incurred any taxpayer funds, or am I mistaken? Or is that some, would that be an example of this, or am I mistaken?
I believe that might possibly be. I didn't deal with that specific agreement. It may have absolutely no cost. But in, just, just as a point of fact, there are certain items that we bring in front of the city commission, even though we're not required to bring it based on the code.
Why?
We just bring it because we think it's, there's something that the city commission would want. For instance.
Why would we want it?
That's a good question. There's certain projects that we think that you may be interested in.
That's a memo.
Sure.
But for example, if, if this were to go through and, and those changes to be made, for example, that agreement between Broward County School Board and the city, because it's not an expenditure, maybe there was, but in the case that there was an expenditure of funds, I assume that comes for liability, like, an agreement needs to be made for liability purposes, but in this case, you wouldn't bring it to us?
No, so I think that's actually different. I think city attorneys previously had mentioned that agreements with other governmental agencies need to be brought in front of the city commission. This is talking about.
Why?
That's a great question.
Why?
The best answer I can offer, Mayor. The best answer I can offer, Mayor and Commissioner, is the fact that the, as between governmental agencies, under the city charter and under state law. Uh, it is advisable to make sure that, that there is a, an, a articulated demonstrable commitment between the two public entities and on the public record as opposed.
Why can't that be, why can't that be, be satisfied under an MOU?
I, I'd be happy to review the issue further, but I think that the, that the, that the more.
I think we create a lot of work we don't need to do.
I'm just giving you best thoughts on the subject. There are liability issues as well, and there are immunity issues, there are, there are a number of different things, but we have traditionally, perhaps even.
Immunity issues can be, can be satisfied through, uh, through a non-contractual agreement. Between the parties, and people do that all the time, I don't understand why we create work that we don't have to, we don't have to do. And then take, take things away from the commission that, um, that create questions. Do you have anything else, Commissioner Good, we have other?
Yes, uh, I'm sorry, just, uh, so, one more, um, so again, thirty-five point three eight bid protest procedures. So this is all about the procurement director, and, uh, again, this is related to the designee, I mean, we got in the way from us. Delegated it to now the city manager, now delegating to the procurement director, now delegating to a designee, and on a bid protest procedure nonetheless. I don't think the, the, the procurement director should have any designee, the procurement director is the procurement director, he's speaking on behalf of the city manager and of the commission. When he's going through a, uh, whatever, whatever it may be, I just don't think that the procurement director in a bid protest procedure should have a designee.
And just to clarify, there's certain times, um, the bid protest procedures have a certain timeframe that we have to respond to certain things in. In the event that, um, incapacitated or something like that, we may need an assistant director addressing, uh, situations like that.
And could we consider adding that as a definition or something like that, because that's, I think, what he was mentioning, that it wasn't clearly defined. Explain it, great, but it's not like in black and white.
I mean, it wasn't ever there before, now you're adding it, and I, I could say, it's just, it's just getting down to the rank and file stuff, which I think shouldn't, shouldn't be done for important things like that.
I agree.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I have no more questions, but I probably would like to make, uh, you know.
A motion at the public.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Schwartz?
Mr. Boenia, come on up. Mr. Gomes, thank you for, um, going through this process. Uh, you didn't have the benefit of the conversation I had with Mr. Boenia and Mr. Dodge, uh, earlier, well, a month ago. Post workshop, so one of the things that, um, is in this document is CPI going forward, right? For, for the procurement process, the, the hundred thousand, that's, that.
This is city manager, not Boenia, that CPI component is not part of this revised ordinance.
So it was removed?
That is correct.
Okay. Based on the discussion of CPI at the workshop, I took, uh, I took out a calculator and Mr. Boenia verified it, right, Mr. Boenia?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm not saying anything unfactual. If we took twenty-five thousand dollars over a twenty-eight year period, we get to forty-nine thousand five hundred. Is that what you calculated?
Approximately.
Okay, now we're doubling that, if we go with a hundred. Removing the CPI. Gets us what, another twenty-eight years before we have to get to two hundred thousand?
Which CPI are you referring to?
The.
There are numerous CPIs.
There was an unweighted, uh, CPI that was discussed during the workshop. It was proposed during the workshop that, um, it would be whatever that number is, and that will be added every year going up, so we're gonna have to come back. Twenty-seven years later to make a change. Remember that, Mr. Gomes?
Yes, um, as you mentioned, the city's code for the twenty-five thousand hasn't changed in twenty-seven years, not saying that tw- twenty-five thousand was right twenty-seven years ago. Maybe that, maybe that should have been fifty thousand at that point.
So, it's first reading. I think the definitions of who's responsible for what is districts one through four and the mayor. That's who's responsible for all of it, we're responsible when people have questions, and when you take away the ability. As, as one would say, it moves things along, but you also, there's the possibility of keeping the public in the dark. Of how the city is conducting business, whether it be with, through another government agency, through an MOU. I'm not opposed to work, I'm not opposed to a fifty-eight item agenda, I'm not opposed to any of that. But to Commissioner Good's point, we have, with all due respect. A turnover of staff that's happening at a very rapid rate in a very short period of time. We have a lot of people retiring with a lot of historical knowledge of how we got here, now we got to this revision. As work that was done many years ago with, uh, Commissioner Iris Siple, I wasn't on the commission then. That's the last time this was touched, and there was a robust discussion. With that city commission about, um, the authority and accountability of who's responsible for what. Some of you in the room were just juniors, and now you're actually in the role. We have evolved in a fiscally stable government, the reason why. You see other cities having the OIG knocking is because there's not enough oversight by the elected body. And I still raise my concerns that I raised back in the workshop. There's, there's things about these, some of these changes, I'm, I'm okay with. But the majority, um, I'm not, I'm not ready to make such a. Big step forward, I'd like to see a smaller step forward, give us an opportunity to evaluate. Perhaps even including a sunset provision of the ordinance for it to be revisited. Otherwise. There's just, if people ask me, well, how much can this, and, Mr. Dodge, I'm not, I'm not ma, I'm not personalizing this, this is a broad brush statement. If the public asks, what, what kind of responsibility does the city manager have, what kind of decisions, and we go, it's a hundred thousand dollars, what do you get to take a look at? No, no, I, I get, eventually I get to take a look at if I ask the right question or if it's shared, and at some point, if it's in the best interest of the public, it might show up here. I, I, that's not something that, that the, the folks who I represent, they don't want me up here doing that. They, they, they want me to be their umpire, to call the balls and the strikes, and the truth is, if it hasn't been pulled. If it hasn't been questioned, it doesn't mean it hasn't been reviewed. So, and, and reviewed not only by elected officials, but by the public in general. I get calls when the, when, when, when the clerk drops that Thursday night link, I get calls Thursday night, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. I get calls from the public, going, what about this and what about that? You take that ability away, the calls don't come, and some of these elected officials in other cities kinda wanna know what's going on, we don't have that ability. So, I'm, I'd like to find, Commissioner Good, some language that makes twenty-two-five cents. But not turn over the whole apple cart and, um, just say, you know what, I think it's been twenty-seven years too long, let's make change.
Okay, I, uh, we're not ready to deal with this, and so, uh, uh, what I have heard tonight on this. Even though we workshopped it, uh. The image that comes to me is sort of like a Picasso. You know, you sort of look at it, it has this odd shape with these angles, and, uh, you can sort of make out what it is, but we're, we're just not there. And that's very frustrating for me, because. I think that many of the questions that have been asked should have been asked before, uh, and we're just not ready to make this decision. Uh, what I'm hearing is my colleagues talking about how uncomfortable they are with this. So I doubt that we're gonna be able to do very much with this tonight. But let me ask you a few questions. So we have a revision here to our procurement policy. Why did you bring this forward, what was the, what was your motivation in bringing this item forward? You are, you are, you are in charge of this area, you're doing a great job, by the way, I think all of us would agree that we love the work that you do. Why did you bring this to us?
Uh, various reasons, one is efficiency, uh, right now, uh, staff's time is tied up with these smaller projects, uh, like we talked about, we're buying servers, we're buying laptops for our charter schools. Band equipment, uh, by the time, the amount of time it takes staff to bring these items to you, uh, multiple times for advertisement and award. We can get that done a lot quicker and focus on the bigger projects, we would like to fo, and, and every procurement that the city does is important. However, uh, we need to get those band equipment to the kids as soon as possible, and those, those requests may come later in the process, because the. Teachers and the staff at the schools are waiting to figure out what students are gonna play which equipment, those are important, we need to get the kids the right equipment, but at the same time, so is. Taking out, uh, forever chemicals from our water supply, those are large projects that take a lot of time for, for staff to work on, but we're stuck focusing on these smaller projects. That are absolutely important, but we need to make the process quicker so that we could be more efficient. Tonight, this city is approving agenda items where we're rolling over funds from previous years for projects we couldn't get, get done. We can't get those projects done because staff is too tied up, focusing on things that we could make so much, uh, more streamlined and efficient, but. Based on the process set by the body, we are stuck, uh, handling things like this, uh, besides that, there's also sustainability, right now, we're printing agenda books. Thick agenda books with advertisements of sixty-three, uh, advertisements a year, uh, sixty-eight awards a year, um, just alone in. Twenty-twenty-four, we had five-hundred-and-sixty-three agenda items, thirty-three percent of those are procurement-related items, we're in front of you all the time, and we're spending a lot of time of, of staff. And, uh, we're, we're losing efficiency, and there's a lot of ways we can make the city better, so.
So those are, those are, those are great answers. And, 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 and you express them in a very human way, and I wanna thank you for that. One of the best management lessons I ever got was from a construction manager who said, it's like this, when you build something, there's three components to it. There's cost, time, and quality, and nothing that you build, nothing that you design, if it doesn't take those three into account, is worth a hill of beans. If you focus on cost, because you want it cheap. The, uh. You might get the time, but you won't get the quality, if you focus on quality, you might get the time, but it'll cost you more. And if you focus on, uh, the other, you, you get a mix. It's only when you, when you have the three in some sense of equilibrium that you have a deal. You're telling me, you're telling me that, um, your staff is going through too much red tape in order to be efficient. For a city this size with the workload that it has, and the answer to that, uh, uh, is that. We want the comfort of review, that means you have to staff up, that means people have to pay for our comfort. Or what we have to do is we've gotta figure out a way to help you be more efficient, which means we have to give up some of that comfort. So that you can be more efficient, and we don't have to tax people more, the question is, where are the internal controls? How do we know that, as Commissioner Schwartz puts it, we won't get that knock on the door that we don't want? Are the internal controls sufficient, if you ask me whether or not, um, two bites out of a contract apple is enough. Versus three or four bites out of a contract review effort, I gotta tell you, I think that two should be enough. And we've gotta find a way to work with you all so that you can be more efficient. I reviewed all this because I, 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 I went to the workshop and I took a look at it, and it just seemed to me. That if what we want to do is preserve the internal controls so that we don't get the knock on the door. But assist in moving these projects along so that Pembroke Pines can be more responsive. The cost of that is gonna be comfort on this dais, and I like that you, I didn't know that you had done this. You actually went out and took a look at the statistics, and statistically speaking, that comfort is very rarely. Utilized. So I'm not sure what we, what we achieve in this, maybe there's another way to communicate. To the commission in a way that preserves your efficiency, but offers us the additional comfort that we need. Maybe there has to be some more efficiency in communicating, maybe there has to be more written information that comes to us. That says, let me give you an update on this, you guys authorized us to do this, it's at this stage, if you have any questions, call me. Oh, now we're at this stage, if you have any questions, call me, sort of like how the supervisor of elections has that little, you know, that little gizmo on the, on the computer that tells you what stage of, of the thing it's at?
Project management, basically.
Yeah.
A, a control software.
I'm not, I'm not necessarily saying that they have to, you know, use critical method theory, but I, I, I think that some sort of. Uh, 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 linear example of where we're at, and maybe, maybe the computerization is capable of doing that. And if, and if there was more information coming to us, maybe that would su- supplement the lack of comfort that people feel. I don't have a problem with, with trusting the city manager with a hundred thousand dollars, I think a city manager that can't be trusted to spend a hundred thousand dollars, can't be trusted to have the job. In today's world, and I don't care what CPI says, I just heard, I just heard today on the news that for the first time ever, the average price of a new car is fifty thousand dollars. I, I see people shaking their heads, you been shopping for cars lately? Fifty thousand dollars for the first time ever, cars have never been more expensive, forget about CPI, CPI doesn't even apply anymore.
Do they include the tariff?
But, well, it could be, but, but every, but every, every price has that now, everywhere you go has that now.
Except, except labor.
Well.
I mean, we're talking commodities versus people, and, and, and to Mr. Gomes's point. Cause every department director knows, I asked the question in budget time, do you have enough people? And to Mr. Dodge's credit, don't ever tell the commission that you need more people.
Of course he's saying that, because he doesn't, because we also tell him that we don't wanna raise the bill rate.
Well, no, it's a matter of adjusting what we spend money on, and investing in people is actually a savings.
You know, but we keep saying that, but we don't do it.
You get the comfort, you get the comfort by providing those savings.
You know, I've been hearing that story for twenty-two years that I've been sitting here, nobody ever follows through with, 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 uh, with a concrete example of how to, of how to get this thing done. And it's just, it's just on and on and on and on, and that's why this thing looks like a Picasso to me, that, you know, you sort of look at it, is it a horse? Is it a, is it a, is it a buffalo? We're not ready to have this discussion, I don't sense that there's any comfort level on this commission to have this discussion. And that, and that depresses me, because I know every effort was made to have workshops. workshops and Monday night memos and getting the agenda out earlier and all this other kind of stuff. And we're just not ready. We're just not ready to have the discussion. And, and here we are, what, what time is it? Ten sixteen, and we still have the rest of the agenda to do. And, you know, we're waffling on this. So I don't know if you guys want to defer it. We're, we're nowhere close to a consensus from what I'm.
Mayor, what I, and I say this with extreme caution. What I haven't heard procurement, again, it's not, I haven't heard from Kefir, from tech, is how AI can make our government more efficient when it comes to writing the bid specs. And here's, here's what really got me on that, on that budget review. The amount of money that we are spending on old technology, the copiers and the stuff on, like, if you look at the, how much the clerk has to spend and how much that these, these books are costing and, and.
Look, you keep talking about the books. There are people who learn and process in a different way. These books, if they were on, I, I would, I would have them printed because I like paper. That's how I operate. You operate a different way. Get off that wavelength because it's just silly.
Well, it, it maybe.
If, 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 if we want to use it certain ways, then that's how we process information. If you ask.
Mayor, in all fairness now.
No, no, no. You've brought this up before and it's kind of annoying, so let's, let's deal with it.
Well, the fact that you're using, the, the fact that you're using paper might be annoying to me.
Okay, it's none of your business. Focus on your stuff.
And that's a good S-word.
Right.
Yeah, and, and what I'm trying to say is, is that there's technology available.
Thank you.
That we have not explored.
Okay.
In procurement.
Well, go, go explore it. Do, don't just talk about it. Take Kefir aside, sit down with the manager. Let's go! But just to come here and, and, and throw this around, these people are paid a lot of money to, to service the city. They call us to commission meetings so that we can make decisions. We're supposed to come here ready to vote.
But we're not ready.
What I'm sensing is.
But we're not ready to vote tonight.
Nah, I, I don't, I don't know where we're at. What I'm sensing is we come here to talk about, I don't know why. And we're supposed to have the consensus before we walk in the door. That's the homework that's required of commissioners. I gotta tell you, I read this item, I asked my questions, I went to the workshop, I'm ready to vote. We're not ready to vote. That's okay. We should defer the item. But tell me, what will make us ready to vote next time?
I would.
Let's talk about it.
I need to, I need clarification, i- if I may. I think there's a couple different aspects to it. And it would be easiest if, maybe, if we're not going to be able to do it at this meeting, to do it at another meeting because I, I don't have the time right now to go through a workshop where then we're going to come back to the meeting and then do this kind of all over again. If we do a workshop, then the meeting needs to be A, B, C, yes, yes, or no, that, that, because I, I agree, I don't prefer that. What I wanted to suggest is I wanted to see either in a show of hands or some kind of acknowledgement. I, from what everybody said on thirty-five nineteen, we don't feel comfortable it being defined by the, by the manager for it to be coming, for him to decide whether it comes to the commission or not if it's above that hundred thousand dollar threshold. And so I, I want to know, I think, I feel comfortable with saying, let's move it up to seventy-five or a hundred, whatever the preference is. Once that's that, there's the quick, the quick bid in between. But I, I really don't feel comfortable on this end is, is after that, it being something that we aren't able to maneuver and see as it goes out to advertisement if we are expecting it to be above that hundred K threshold. We need to take it by piecemeal, and if we want to do that now or at the next meeting, but we each need to come back with what we, what line item of this we agree with and what we don't. Because I, at least on the agenda, it was a little bit hard to parse.
I'm not sensing, I'm not sensing. I'm not sensing that this commission is ready to make that decision, so.
No, but I, I don't think so either. But if we do a workshop or if we put this back onto the agenda without doing a workshop, I think it needs to be.
Do you all want a workshop?
Item by item on it.
Okay. So then, Mr. Dodge, prior to the next meeting, we need another workshop. We need two workshops now, prior to the next meeting, so that we can, so that we can deal with it. And let's, let's, let's take a look at this again at first reading in, in November. Hopefully, all of your questions can be worked out, can be processed, and we'll get a, we'll get a new draft and.
Could I make a comment to what Commissioner Rodriguez said? I'm prepared to vote on one item, but to your point, there's a lot. In particular, like I said, the threshold for me is something that a city manager should have, but what do you?
What I would like to see, though, if in the moment that it comes back in a workshop or something else, when it goes through, you guys notated it as A, B, C, it needs to also have where that is on the thirty-five point something because it's, I was like flipping from one page to another and I, it's legalese language. It's hard for us to identify which one you're talking about in reference in, exactly in the ordinance. So if you can do that, then we can take it piece by piece on that end. That would be really helpful to me. I was able to kind of put it down, but, and, but that would be easier to digest in the future.
I'm simply going to ask all of us together to work together as colleagues. We defer too many items. We come here not ready to vote. That has to stop because we're gumming up the works. So is there a motion to defer the item and, and have a workshop?
Motion. I, I'll, I'll support it, but shouldn't we say time certain for the workshop?
Yes, it's for, it's for the next meeting and we will have another first reading and we'll have two workshops on that, on that meeting, at that meeting. And all of the questions and comments and, and issues that were talked about here will be considered as part of the.
I'm only going like this because I don't know if you want to make that motion.
I'll make that motion to defer.
Then I'll second you.
There's, there's a motion and a second. Anyone? I see no, okay, fine. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously, this item is now deferred. Item twenty-two, resolution.
Thank you, Mayor, for the indulgence. Number twenty-two is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-two-five R dash forty-two, which is a proposed resolution of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, authorizing the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, the city clerk, and the finance director to sign vouchers and checks, to make deposits and withdrawals, and authorize transactions on investments pursuant to the city's investment policy ordinance and as provided for by law, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Item twenty-two on the floor.
Can I have a motion, please?
I will move it.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Good. Any discussion? Hearing none. Any, any from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, item twenty-three.
Thank you, Mayor. Commission, the permit number is number thirty-nine, thirty-two for the record. Next up is twenty-three. Mr. Mayor, is, is, is as follows. A motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-two-five R dash forty-three, which is a proposed resolution of the City Commission authorizing the reallocation of home investment partnership program consortium cooperation agreement funds, tongue twister, from the purchase assistance strategy to a new multifamily housing strategy to be implemented by the Broward, by Broward County in partnership with the South Florida Community Land Trust, that's the SFCLT, for the purpose of preserving affordable housing within the City of Pembroke Pines, providing for disbursement of home program funds, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the reallocation, providing for conflict severability and providing for effective date. Number twenty-three on the floor, Mayor and Commission, for consideration.
Moved by Commissioner Good, seconded by Commissioner Schwartz. Any discussion? Seeing none? Any from the public?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just make a comment here. This, these are one of these projects that seems to just kind of go pretty quickly, but it should be recognized by the public. I mean, I think this is a great opportunity. I think staff has done a great job of putting a plan together involving CLT and the county and the city. And we're able now to have some affordable housing that's in the thirty to eighty percent AMI range, which is huge important because most of all of our other affordable housings are at the hundred and twenty-plus range. This one is, is real affordable housing in the city and sponsored by three very important groups. And I'd like to congratulate staff for coordinating and putting this all together and working with the county and CLT to make it work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor. Commissioner Good and I share, share our boarder together. And without saying too much about it, this, this is going to be a tremendous asset to Districts One and Two without increasing traffic, without increasing some of the things that come along with rental. We, Commission, you'll, you'll see, you'll see what's coming, but this is the first step. I want to thank everyone involved. This is a good step for, for the City of Pembroke Pines. I want to thank Mr. Stam and his staff for, for making this work. This is, this has been months and months and a lot of work involved in it. I'm happy to support the item.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
Directing, Mayor, Commission, permit number is thirty-nine, thirty-three. Next up is number twenty-four, Mayor. Motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-two-five dash R dash forty-four is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending resolution number three-eight-eight-four to increase the maximum amount not to exceed from three hundred and seventy-five thousand nine thirty-six, inclusive of two percent of the cost for allowance and ten percent of the expected cost for contingencies to add an additional one thirty-two thousand eight zero one point fifty-six for a total new amount not to exceed five oh eight seven thirty-seven point fifty-six, directing the appropriate city officials to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of the resolution, directing the city clerk to transmit a copy of the resolution to the Florida Department of Transportation, providing for conflict severability and providing for an effective date. Item twenty-four on the floor, Mayor and Commission.
Your motion? Moved by Commissioner Good, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
For the record, the permit number is number thirty-nine, forty-four.
Would you read item twenty-five to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor and Commission, if you will. Number twenty-four is discussion and possible action to appoint two members to the Police and Fire Pension Board for a two-year term, which would expire in June of twenty-twenty-seven. Item twenty-five on the floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, I'm handing over the gavel for the purpose of making two motions. As you all know, upon becoming mayor, I took a very serious interest. I've always had the interest. But I took a very direct interest in the Police and Fire Pension Fund. This is a one billion dollar approximately fund that does two things. It invests that money and it also pays out pensions to retired heroes from our Police and Fire Departments that they count on. The monies has to be invested in a very safe way, but it also has to be invested in a way that earns a rate of return. We unanimously approved a measure about a year or so ago at the request of the Pension Board to give them greater leeway to earn more money in interest through their investment policy, which we control. It's the only thing that we control in that board, is who we appoint to three of the nine members and the investment policy. We provided that. Approximately half of all of the ad valorem tax, according to the city manager, that City Pembroke Pines collects, has to be shared with the pension in order to keep it afloat by state requirements. That said, they are actually, comparatively speaking, doing pretty well. They earn somewhere between seven and eight percent a year. That's pretty much what the other pension funds are earning. I hope that as of late, they've been doing better than that. I don't know. They have a new pension, uh, uh, policy, investment policy to work with. But they need to do somewhere in the area of eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen percent in order to keep us from having to spend fifty cents or fifty-five cents on the dollar collected in property tax. And I dare not, dare not even mention what Tallahassee currently thinks of that subject. In order to keep that fund floating, a fund that, that we're proud of because we were very generous and I think we did the right thing to both Police and Fire by providing them great pensions. However, that has to be paid for. And it's either going to come out of the city's coffers or it's going to come out of Wall Street in investment. Now, the police appoint three members, fire service appoints three members, and we get to appoint three members. Those are the only three apples. Those are the only three bites out of that apple we get. And if that fund doesn't perform to the level that it needs to perform, we end up having to pay the difference. And so it occurs to me, not just at this time, but at any time, that what we must have is the most talented financial people we can find. And the statute requires them to live in Pembroke Pines. Now, we've had members there before. We didn't necessarily have that, the back, the kind of strong investment, financial background that, that I'm talking about. But they've done the job. And I'm thankful to them for the job they've done. And if we choose to appoint someone else, it's not a repudiation on any personal level. It's business. Business. And so, and so I've taken a, I've taken a good, hard look at this. And I want to thank Commissioner Rodriguez for suggesting that we do more advertising. It helped. I did a video, which a lot of people saw. But I also want to thank Mike Ross from the, from the chamber, who I called. And he figured out a way to get in touch with every one of the members of the chamber who had a financial planner background. And a bunch of them applied. And one of them, because I have two motions to make. The first one is easy. The chair of that board is Tom Moran. And he has been doing a great job there. And so that's going to be my first motion. But the second one, but the second one, and I have to tell you, I went through every one of these backgrounds. And they are all very talented people. And I want to thank every one of them. And I'm telling you that th- these are resumes and applications that we should hold. Mr. Clerk, we should hold these in a file because these are gold. These are people that live in Pembroke Pines who are capable of doing the job. And these appointments come up all the time. People move away, things happen. The statute says you must live in the city. We actually got one application from someone who we checked and didn't live in the city. But rising above, in my opinion, in terms of capacity and understanding, was Greg Erzary. Greg lives in, what is it, Mike? Spring Valley, right across from, from the, from the Lexus. I actually met, I, I, I didn't, I didn't put the, the pieces together, but I actually met him. He and his sons, he, he used to coach his sons when they were in WPPO baseball. One of them plays for the University of Pittsburgh. It's cold there. And he is a senior vice president at, at Northern Trust. One of the few companies, I have to tell you, and this isn't a, a, I don't have any money in with them or, yeah, this isn't a, a commercial for them. But they're, but they stand out to me because it's one of the few companies that during the recession required no bailout funds. You know why? They didn't issue any toxic loans. They never gave up the stewardship of their underwriting. And people go to this company, who are multimillionaires and billionaires, to invest their money. This is a boutique investment, uh, uh, um, uh, house. This is a boutique investment house because their money is safe, but they're making a good rate of return. And when I mentioned this to him, he said, "Well, the first thing is, I have to ask my company." And he asked his company just about the same way as others did. And the company said, "Yeah." He's got a Series Six license, he's got a Series Seven license, he's got a Series Sixty-three license. He's been doing investment for big accounts for twenty-five years. The other investment professionals are also impressive. I'm thankful to all of them. It's a shame we can only appoint two today. But in my view, Gregory Irizarry is the best resume that we have here, and if we were hiring, rather than just appointing, I couldn't bring myself to hire anybody else. His background is perfect for this job. So the first motion I'd like to make is for the reappointment of Tom Moran.
Seconded by Commissioner Good.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yes. I see Mr. Moran in the audience. Come down, sir.
Push the button. Yeah, I think you're close.
That's the one.
Good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Moran, you've been the Chair for how long?
I was the Chair for approximately four years prior to my retirement.
And how long have you been serving on the Board?
Eight years.
The investment policy of the Board has been established by the City Commission, correct?
Yes.
And you're bound to follow that policy, correct?
Yes.
Take the public through the, what happens when the quarterly, at quarterly meetings, the Board gets a, so the role of the nine members is to absorb the information that's provided and make changes to the firm, not necessarily the investments themselves?
Correct. We leave that to the professionals. We pay them, that's what we pay them to do.
The, for the record, I held a Series Six years ago, and eight percent return has been the historical Dow Jones average. Have you seen fourteen percent in the eight years you've been a part of this Board?
Yes, we've had once or twice very high returns.
And despite the, I want to opinionize this, so let me ask it in a better way. Despite the policy, the investment policy that Commission has provided you as a collective Board, the money managers have achieved higher than eight percent, fourteen percent. And where does a fund currently sit amongst similar size nationally?
We pretty much always fall within the top ten percent decile in plans of our size, basically of the same makeup, which comprises of about four hundred plans.
So the nine members of this Board, and I know we have some firefighters and police officers who've retired and they've been replaced with other firefighters and police officers. We've had a pretty, over the years that I've been here, the citizens, the three citizens have been primarily been the same. The fund is outperforming ninety percent of the country, based on what you're saying.
Yes.
Okay. So would, give me an idea, if a certified financial planner, now this is going to be your opinion now, I hate to put you on the spot, but if a certified investment planner or advisor were placed on your Board, can they question the money managers or make changes to what's already been invested?
They can absolutely question them. They can't make any changes on their own without a vote from the Board, but they certainly have an opportunity to question the money managers when they come in.
Okay. How about the consultant?
Yes, the consultant also.
Okay. Would you find that having someone who's a registered investment advisor be an asset to the Board?
It would definitely be an asset, yeah.
Mayor, how many registered investment advisors do we have amongst the list of the members? I know you-
You have the list. Count them.
Mayor, can we?
I didn't count them. I went through all of the resumes and I've made the motion as to who, the two I felt were best.
Point of clarification, I only had, maybe I messed up. I only had one motion right now.
Yeah, no, well, I'm going to make the other motion.
Okay.
So, okay.
So we're only talking about him right now.
Well, actually, we're getting some insight for the public. This is for the public. You and I have had this conversation-
Yes.
-over the years now, because every year it's about making sure that our fund is doing well.
Yes.
People depend on it.
And if I could bring back, just bring this up again, I know I mentioned it at the last time I appeared here at the Commission meeting, thanking you once again for allowing us to change our investment policy.
Yeah.
To reiterate what I said, our consultant at every quarterly meeting, there hasn't been a single quarterly meeting in the eight years I've been on the Board where he didn't mention that we could be performing better if we didn't have the handcuffs of the sixty-fourty split on us.
Right.
And now you guys have taken them off and hopefully we look forward to seeing better returns.
Okay. Mr. Moran, I want to thank you for your continued service to the community. I know that when you go to these meetings, you have one thing and one, only one thing in mind, and that's making sure that those who are retired and dependent, and are dependent on these funds, that they are, that they're protected, that we're not taking unusual risks. The nearly billion dollars that we have here, some of it is unfunded, and market conditions can change. You recently, I'm not personalizing it, the Board recently made some changes to the makeup of the organization, and what was that?
Could you be a little more specific on that?
Consultant, consultant change, money manager changes. What changes in the last year have been made?
Our consultant hasn't changed.
Correct.
Yeah, we've changed a couple of our money managers, the firms, not a person specifically.
The firms.
Yes.
And then when the Board made those evaluations, what is it about those firms that seem to say, "You know what? We're here, but we believe this firm is going to take us here"?
We, personally, and I think I share the same opinion of everybody else on the Board, our main concern, like you said, is supporting the retirees so that they can continue to get their pay every month. So we always focus on long-term. Personally, I always look at five- and ten-year return to see how they're doing. I don't like to just look at the two or the three-year because anybody can have a good two or three years. You look long-term down the road, five, ten, fifteen, when a money manager's beaten the benchmark of the index they're in by, you know, seventy-five, eighty percent of the time, that's going to be a good indicator that that's going to be a good investment.
And we're ninety percent ahead of everybody else, which is fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Moran.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
So-
But I'm not the Mayor.
I know, Mr. Vice Mayor. Relatively speaking, eight percent is great. But our expenses vastly differ from those other ninety percent of the programs. As you well know, our expenses are much higher, and that's the problem. The problem is beating ninety percent isn't good enough unless this city is sentenced to sending fifty-five cents on every dollar that we send to this one fund. I think thirty cents on the dollar, thirty-five cents, that's reasonable. I think forty percent becomes a problem. Fifty-five percent is unsustainable. Who says, who else says it's unsustainable? It's not just my opinion. Our auditors, who were just here today, wrote a report. Mr. Dodge, can you provide that report? And it says unsustainable. Is that correct, Mr. Dodge? That's how he described the fund?
If I do with the report, Mayor.
And this is why it's so important when we make these appointments, especially since these people live in our city and they're willing to serve for free work that they're paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to do during the day, they're offering to us for free. Why in the world wouldn't we pick the most highly qualified people that we can find in that field who ask questions like, "Why are you investing in this when it's a dog? Why aren't you involved in that? Explain it to me. Explain it to us." How often are questions like that asked?
All the time.
Yeah?
All the time. Every meeting. Maybe not every meeting, but every meeting that our consultant-
Because I've been to a couple of your meetings.
It's asked.
Uh-huh. Well, I got to tell you, I think that you're doing a great job as Chair, and I'm very, very thankful to nominate you for another term, and I'm very thankful for the service that you had and hopefully for the service that you'll continue to provide in the future. But I want to present to you as much help as we can. And while you're collecting a pension, and I congratulate you on your service-
Thank you.
-remember that we send you there to make money.
Yep.
Because the money you make is the money we don't, we need in order to run the city. And we either have to pay you, or we can pay the police officers, or we can pay the firefighters, or we can deal with the parks, or we can do the roads. You can't do it all if you're giving half of it away. And that's why I took an interest. Frankly, I was the only mayor ever, I think I was the only mayor in the city's history ever to visit your Board, right?
You are, yes.
Okay. And in a very short period of time, because I've only been here eighteen months, already you've got a new policy, a new investment policy that you were trying for years to get and you have it.
Yes.
Okay. And now we're up to the next stage of appointing people. Look, Commissioner Good had an appointee who was also a banker, and he's been asking a lot of questions. And that's how you get a better rate of return. Because, look, I mean, every company has their pet investments that they want their clients to get, for whatever reason. It's nice that they have friends. We need friends who are going to be safe and make us money. And eight percent against our expenses just doesn't cut it. We have to give you too much. And folks in this city don't want taxes raised, and people in Tallahassee don't want taxes at all. If that goes away, I don't know what happens to your fund. That's, those are the stakes that are involved. So as I go through these resumes that are in front of us, knowing that we have to fill this position, I'm making a recommendation that you have one of them and that my next motion gets the next one.
Okay, but so you made a motion. Commissioner Good seconded it.
Right.
We've had discussion except Commissioner Rodriguez. Did you have anything to say?
Thank you for your service. I'm happy to support.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to say the same thing. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Happy to support. So do you want a roll call or?
No. All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have public input here?
Talk to him. He's running the meeting.
Would you like to speak before or after this vote? There's only one, this is one individual.
Would you like to speak before or after?
Okay. There's a respectful way to do it, though, Commissioner. You don't have to say, "Whoa, whoa, whoa." You could have just walked right up here. Okay. So the, we're going to have the vote, and then I'll bring up Commissioner McCloskey. All those in favor?
Aye.
You know what? Hold on. I want to hear from the public. This is how we run a meeting. We have a motion, we have a second, we have discussion up here, then the public gets to, that's how it's conducted, Vice Mayor. Please, let's follow the process.
You're fine to come up next time. He, it was on his desk. You just come up here and let me know. Could you give him the microphone?
And then we'll vote.
Well, don't sit now. We just told you to come up.
Vice Mayor, he has three minutes.
Do you want to sit down or what?
No, I said to come up. Name and address.
Jack McCloskey, twenty-two forty-one, Northwest Eighty-second Way, Pembroke Pines. Before I start, you guys cannot be heard by the audience. I have a hearing problem, but my wife, who has no hearing problem, cannot hear you. I would suggest to Charlie on your fiftieth anniversary that you get clips and wear them and have on and off.
Mr. Keford is overseeing that, so noted.
Anyway, anyway. You have a somewhat impressive list of twelve candidates that are supposed to be residents and/or they're not. Anyway, for the Fire and Police Pension Board, I wonder if you have all read all of the The following is my opinion or observations on my reading of them. Two of them are not residents of the city. One is Gregory Irizarry.
Okay. I've been to his house.
It's a fact.
I've been to his house in Spring Valley, but okay.
Anyway, he has a business in the city, but he is not a resident.
Yes, he is.
He said that in the past, he's been a resident of Pembroke Pines.
Can we pull up his? Excuse me, but he has submitted a resume with his address on it.
His address is in the office park that the Pension Board meets in.
His office-
It's a Hundred and Fiftieth Avenue, right?
No, sir. It's, that's not the address on his resume or on his application.
Well, we disagree. Anyway.
You might ask him, but go ahead.
The second one was Mr. Katz, who was rejected by the city attorney last meeting. He lives in North Miami Beach. There is another applicant which has a conflict of interest. I'm sorry. Mr. Irizarry, I was in error. He does live in the city.
Ah, okay.
But he is, and this would be up to the city attorney, he does work for Northern Trust, which is a conflict in my mind because the Pension Board has hired Northern Trust Company.
His company has given clearance to participate?
That's up to the city attorney. Another applicant claims that the current pension fund isn't self-maintaining and is subsidized by the city taxpayers.
Which applicant, sir? Could you, but you said an applicant. Can you say the name?
I'd rather not say the names, but-
He's almost out of time.
Because in this, my presentation, I intended not to say any names, but I did reference Mr. Irizarry. Anyway, you can do this by simply acquainting yourself with State Statute one-seventy-five and one-eighty-five, which takes in the accounting and the fact that by state law, the state follows that law and allocates to the city. In fact, I think that money actually comes to the mayor, and the mayor, or within forty-eight hours, the state must allocate this amount of money- hours, the state must allocate, uh, this amount of money to the city.
Okay, let me ask a question, because you brought up the attorney, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Are there any issues with the applicants that have been placed before the city commission today?
My best answer is after having reviewed them, the answer is no, unless they're, they're, they're not being accurate about what they filed with the city.
Okay.
Which, which I can't judge, nor can you, unless you go deeper.
Okay, so, did I hear you correctly, Commissioner? Mr. Irazari, you admit now lives in the city of Pembroke Pines?
Yes.
Okay. With as much respect as I can, I can offer you, can, do, is sixty seconds okay? Cause we, we do have to, we normally give three minutes, I know it's gone over, I'm giving you deference because you are an elected official, could, could you wrap up a little bit?
I've got about two paragraphs to go.
Okay, you got it.
Thank you. The, uh, current pension board is, as you've already mentioned, is worth a billion dollars. We, uh, are within the top ten percent of nationwide pension boards, police and fire pension boards. The applicant that submitted that mantra evidently doesn't understand state statute one seventy-five and one eighty-five. Because, as I said, they are obligated to send money to the city. And that's what I think that applicant is referring to. Finally, there are among the twelve applications, one PhD, who is a retired police officer, two other retired police officers, Tom being one, and one firefighter, retired firefighter. There are eight that meet newly required or created by this commission, as having a financial background. Most of the officers do not have a financial background. I have served on this board for thirteen years. And I did it as a payback to two of my three sons. One has retired from the city of Pembroke Pines as a police officer, the other is retired from the city of Hallandale Beach as a firefighter and a MT. Want to express my appreciation to past commissions for their appointment, and thank you for the privilege of serving. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, okay. Just to make sure, we had the motion on the floor, it was seconded, we went through public discussion, all in, I'd rather do a roll call if possible. Mr. Clerk, could we call the roll?
On the, on the motion on the floor, Mr. Vice Mayor.
On the motion on the floor.
Thank you, sir.
To Tom Moran.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Vice, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to, uh, make a motion to appoint Gregory R. Irazari to the Pembroke Pines Police and Fire Pension Board.
Point of clarification before a second?
Go ahead.
Mayor, I, I'm not seeing in Mr. Irazari's, uh, application that, uh, there was a, I don't know if it's e- ethics or a company approval from, uh, Northern Trust in the application indicating, uh, that he does not have a conflict. Mr. Moran, does this, does the, uh, board invest or have any business with Northern Trust, if you could answer on the record, please?
Yes, there are, they, they control our body, they're the ones who are responsible, we just recently changed to them.
Pick, pick your microphone off and, and just, I, I know it's late.
Is that better?
Yeah, and just slow, slow down your response.
No problem.
Yeah.
Um, we just recently hired Northern Trust, we changed.
As what?
As our, um,
Is it money manager or consultant?
They're, they're in charge of paying out the benefits to the retirees.
They don't invest.
And we, and we just made that change from our former company because they were having some issues, and we just hired Northern Trust, I think the, at the beginning of this month is when they actually took over.
Okay, so, just for clarification, is that dispersment of funds or investment of funds?
No, dispersment of the funds.
Dispersment only, so they're prohibited from having any, um, any investment?
They're our custodian bank.
They're ho- they're holding the funds?
Correct.
Thank you, so they're basically the bank?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so there, are you done?
Yeah, it was just, yeah, it was just a point of clarification, we all.
I, I, I just wanted to tell you that, uh, I spoke to numerous of these candidates over the phone, and every one of them that is, including Mr. Irazari, told me that, uh, that they, uh, have clearance from their company to apply, otherwise he wouldn't have applied.
Okay, so, you made the motion, is there a second?
Well, there's a nomination, because I, I like, I, I don't wanna go back and forth on motions, I would nominate John Kern, who is one of three financial planners in the, in this group. Mr. Kern has been with Foresters, uh, he's a, he's a, uh, University of Pennsylvania School of Wharton, um, recipient of years of service, gives back to the community, works in, in Miami-Dade County, um, with, uh, underprivileged, uh, kids, uh, to help them with, uh, finance. Mr. Kern, for a brief period of time, served on this board, is familiar with the board, is familiar with the policies, and can answer the, and, and can answer the questions that Mr. Moran alluded to with respect to the investment policies, money managers, and consultants. So I would, I would nominate, as the mayor's nominating, uh, Mr. Irazari, I would like to, uh, have, uh, Mr. Kern, uh, also on the, on the table for, uh, consideration.
Okay, a- any discussion from Commissioner Rodriguez or Commissioner Good, who are the only two I have not heard from?
No. No discussion for me, from what I saw on the applications, I was looking forward to supporting, uh, Gregory Is- Irazari. Irazari.
Commissioner, you're done, I'm sorry, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, I just, yeah, that's it.
Commissioner Good?
Oh, you, you.
It went out?
Hold on.
Hit it.
We only get that eight at a time, so.
Okay. No, but, yeah, but I think he's, he's up, he's up now.
I'm up, so I, uh, wanna say that, uh, of all the resumes that are, uh, in this application package, Mr. Irazari is probably the most qualified, in my opinion.
Okay. So, Mr. Goran?
Somebody's gotta second my nomination.
So.
So, if I may, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes, because I wanna make sure I'm following the procedure here.
You can call it a motion, you can call it a nomination, but the first nomination, first motion was by the.
Was the mayor.
Of Mr. Irazari.
Okay.
That's on the floor, and there was a second theoretically to that particular nomination.
I just heard Commissioner Rodriguez.
Correct, and then rightfully so, uh, Commissioner Schwartz offered the name of, uh, uh, Mr. Kern, uh, as a potential nominee or by motion, and to the extent that if you're taking them in order of the delivery to the dais, then you're voting on Mr. Irazari first.
Okay.
If he gets, if he gets the number of votes that were, that were required by code, which is a majority, you don't need to vote him on, on the alternate.
Okay, so, Mayor Castillo made a nomination, Commissioner Rodriguez seconded it, uh, roll call vote, Clerk?
Discussion on the motion?
You're right, discussion on the motion.
And members from the public?
Any members from the public? I don't normally hold the gall, well, thanks for helping me.
Okay, not a problem, uh, I, I have a, um, I have an issue with, uh, Northern Trust being, being the bank and having a member despite whether or not a company approves or not, it's the optics that, that has the appearance of conflict, just like our Form eight B, if there's this, the appearance of conflict, uh, we abstain. So therefore, um, while I find Mr. Irazari qualified, you know, to be able to hold the position on a fire plan, uh, police pension board, not the one that his employer is, uh, they, they's receiving compensation from, so for that reason, I can't support Mr. Irazari.
Okay, I, I, may I?
Yeah.
Commissioner, with, with, with the greatest respect, i- if you feel that you can't support the candidate, then you should vote no. However, your, your, your assertion is an appearance of confusion, not an appearance of impropriety. He has, uh, uh, received, uh, an ethical and, uh, uh, operational clearance, he is a senior vice president with the company, he's an officer. And for, for, uh, an officer who have been approved, uh, by his bank for that purpose, they know whose money they, uh, uh, they service. So, if, if the bank doesn't have a problem, uh, I don't see how it could possibly be a problem.
Well, we don't have any evidence of that, sir.
Okay, well.
With all due respect.
Well, if, if you wanna challenge that evidence after the vote you make?
Okay, um, we ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk? Mayor Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, okay, item twenty-six. Uh, no, reports of the league.
Correct.
Commissioner Rodriguez, what's new with the league?
I believe, uh, the last one was during, uh, the Jewish holidays, so there wasn't one, the upcoming one, I've already notified staff that I will not be in attendance, have a small family matter to attend to, and therefore, um, Vice Mayor will be there. Uh, I told you.
Small family matter.
A small family matter.
Right.
Yes, and, and we're, we're very, we're very, um, we're very glad for your small family ma- matter, and, uh, wish you every happiness and success. Reports of the MPO, anything, uh, Commissioner?
They deferred the meeting until, uh, the third.
Okay, reports of the city manager and city attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, I would like to recommend that we combine the meeting of November fifth with the meeting of November nineteenth, uh, due to a conflict on the fifth, uh, so that we would have one meeting on October nineteenth.
November nineteenth.
November nineteenth, yes.
Is there a motion? Moved by Commissioner Rodriguez, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor, any discussion? Any from the public, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, item twenty-six.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, item twenty-six.
Is there anything else, Mr. Manager, I'm sorry?
No, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, number twenty-six is a discussion and possible motion to approve the necessary Florida bar conflict waiver for the city's engagement of Dennis Mealy Esquire of the Greenspoon Martyr Law Firm, to provide certain professional legal services to the city of Pembroke Pines from time to time, and as directed in the attached engagement letter relating to certain environmental permitting and other associated matters as may be assigned by the city. It is an item which I placed on the agenda as, as you have traditionally done, uh, I don't control or own the, uh, the privilege, it is owned by the collegial body, it's owned by each of you in, not individually, but as a body. As the chief legal officer of the city and as the city attorney to engage Mr. Mealy for the purposes intended, uh, I cannot provide that waiver. I'll give you an example of recent activities, as you may remember, the city just closed a, a refunding of its GO bond issue. Mike Weiner, who is a partner with the Holland and Knight Law Firm, was disclosure counsel. Disclosure counsel prepares the official statement in the background that are basically used to, to market the city's bonds publicly and through the placement by the underwriters. Holland and Knight does legal work before the city commission from time to time with various and sundry matters that it handles, not in conflict with the engagement of Mr. Weiner as the disclosure counsel. To that extent, Mr. Mealy has private clients that he appears before the commission on periodically, um, and to the extent that we would seek to engage him to do specific work under the terms of the letter which is attached, um, we do need to seek the commission's approval for the waiver, uh, there's no physical form, it is simply by motion accomplished in that regard, um, and it is not a, uh, any, anything more than what we've asked the commission in the past, although I believe, although other colleagues of mine who are city attorneys think that they possess that privilege or have the right to seek its waiver, I do not believe I have that legal authority, ethical authority either, so I, I'd seek your guidance and direction.
Thank you very much, can I have a motion to, uh, approve a waiver of, uh, of conflict?
Motion made.
Moved by, uh, Commissioner Rodriguez, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor, any discussion? Any from the public, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner, I appreciate the guidance and direction, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much, this meeting's adjourned.